Everyone, uh, welcome to our, uh, city council meeting. This is May fifteenth. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Grant Smith.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
And Mr. Feis.
Here.
All right, thank you. Uh, could you please join me in a moment of silence? All right, thank you. Uh, the pledge this evening will be led by Ray Feis, Mayor Pro Tem.
All right, uh, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the agenda, uh, as proposed, as well as the approval of minutes of April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, special session as proposed. Excuse me, and the approval of minutes from May first, twenty twenty-three, regular session as proposed.
Second.
A motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. We will get started this evening. We have a busy agenda. Uh, the first one is, uh... Emergency, let me see, Emergency Medical... I think this is the order. Uh, Emergency Medical Services Week, so who's joining me for that one?
Mr. Hernandez.
Hello, Mr. Hernandez.
Tell the chief to get up out there, Sharon. Everyone say. City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas emergency medical service is a vital public service, and whereas access to quality emergency medical care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the emergency medical services team consists of emergency medical physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, law enforcement dispatchers, educators, administrators, and council and mayor, but we didn't add that. Uh, whereas the member of the emergency medical teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas emergency medical providers, often with little to no compensation, if volunteers, and occasionally at great risk to themselves, continue to provide critical and timely care and transport to those in need of their service. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim May fourteenth through the twentieth, twenty twenty-three, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Mr. Hernandez, please tell us about today.
Well, uh, the week will be dedicated to emergency medical, um, services personnel. Um, it's time for us to, uh, thank the public, um, and this council, mayor, for the support that you guys provide us in, uh, providing that care. We want to make sure to invite everybody to our open house this coming Wednesday evening, uh, from five-thirty to seven-thirty. Come on out, uh, see what we're capable of, and, uh, have something to eat and some refreshments.
I just want to say, um, it's been astounding, uh, uh, working with our fire department. Uh, you guys are at the front line, uh, trying to save lives, trying to serve the community, whether it's going to rescue someone from a fire or getting a cat out of a tree. Uh, you guys do so much for our local community, and we're very appreciative of your efforts. So this Wednesday, make sure you get out from five-thirty to seven-thirty, uh, over to fire station number one, that's four twenty-five East Third Street, and let them know that they're appreciated and that you support them. So gentlemen, excellent job, and we thank you so much. All right, I would like to, uh, ask, uh, Chief Leibow to come on up. Is there anyone joining you? All right. And this is for National Police Week. Whereas the Congress of the United States of America has designated the week of May fifteenth through the twenty-twenty-first as National Police Week. And whereas law enforcement officers are guardians of life and property, defenders of the individual right to be free men and women, warriors in the war against crime, and dedicated to the preservation of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas it is known that all too often, police officers are killed in the line of duty nationwide, our community joins with other cities and towns, uh, to honor all peace officers everywhere. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim the week of May fifteenth through the twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, as National Police Week, as well order all flags on all facilities, uh, to be flown at half-staff on May seventeen. So Chief Leibow.
Thank you, sir. Um, we do have a memorial on May seventeenth at ten a.m. at Veterans Memorial Hall. Public is certainly welcome to attend, and we'd appreciate anybody from the elected body that could attend as well. Thank you.
A man of few words sometimes, but, um, but chief, before you, chief, before you, before you go, we just want to let you know this council and this mayor appreciate the work that all of you are doing in the police department. Uh, a lot of us run from trouble, but you guys run to trouble to, to solve and, uh, create solutions. And you've even stepped up to add the mental health, uh, component to everything you do. So we want to say we celebrate you, and we hope everyone can show up at ten o'clock a.m. on May seventeenth down at the Veterans, Veterans Hall. All right, thank you. All right, uh, it's, um, who's coming up for the World Neurofibromatosis, Fibromatosis Day? Do we have someone? All right, I will read this. Uh, whereas the Children's Tumor Foundation is observing May seventeen, twenty twenty-three as World Neurofibromatosis NF Awareness Day to educate the public about this rare genetic disorder. And whereas although over two million people around the world are living with NF, and one in every three thousand births is diagnosed with NF, it is still relatively unknown to the public. NF affects all populations equally regardless of race, ethnicity, or gender. And whereas NF causes tumors to grow on the nerves throughout the body, and also can affect development of the brain, cardiovascular system, bones and skin. The disorder can lead to blindness, deafness, bone abnormalities, disfigurement, learning disabilities, disabling pain, and cancer. And whereas the Children's Tumor Foundation leads efforts to promote and financially sponsor world-class medical research aimed at finding effective treatments and ultimately a cure for NF. And whereas the Children's Tumor Foundation is connecting the unconnected, leading the way through innovative and inventive approaches to scientific advancement and improve patient care, revamping systems to accelerate the path from discovery to treatment. And whereas the Children's Tumor Foundation works to improve access to quality patient care through national NF clinic network. The Children's Tumor Foundation provides patient and family support through the information resources youth programs and community activities. And whereas much remains to be done in raising public awareness of NF to help promote early diagnosis, proper management and treatment, and prevention of complications, and supportive research. Now therefore I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim, uh, May seventeen, twenty twenty-three, as World Neurofibromatosis Day. Thank you. All right, and last but definitely not least, uh, for National Public Works Week, uh, who do we have with us? All right, whereas public work professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health high quality of life and well-being of the people of the City of Waterloo. And whereas these infrastructure fatality, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste system, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in, in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the City of Waterloo to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. Whereas this year, twenty twenty-three, March the sixty-third, Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. And be it now, and now therefore I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim this week of May twenty-first through the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, as National Public Works Week. So that's a pretty big day for people, so please let us know.
Thank you. We would like to invite the public to come out to our Public Works Building, six twenty-five Glenwood Street, on May twenty-fourth from three to six p.m. And we'll have refreshments, and we'll provide information, all the services that we provide to the community. Our rain date is May twenty-fifth, should we get rained out on the twenty-fourth.
Right. And I just want to say, um, you know, being, uh, as a city councilman, and then eventually as mayor, there were so many things that were happening in this community that I kind of took for granted. You know, you take for granted, you put your garbage can out and someone picks it up. You know, sometimes we take for granted that every time there's a snow emergency, there's always going to be city workers to clean the streets. We take for granted sometimes that, uh, every time you flush the commode, that it's going to go somewhere to be processed. But our Public Works Division, if you have not had an opportunity to visit and see the phenomenal work that we're doing, it's an incredible operation from the maintenance of our street lights to all public works. It's an incredible operation. So if you get a chance during this week and you see someone driving one of the trucks, send them a wave. If you're able to come over, uh, to the open house to see the incredible work, please do so. These folks need to know that they're appreciated and they're supported. So we want to thank you so much for all of the efforts, all of the critical work that you're doing to make sure that we have safe communities, livable communities, and from the city council and from the mayor's office and all the rest of our staff, we thank you so much for being such an incredible department. Thank you. Um, Mr. Kentschenko, Kent, are you here? Where's Kent at? Kentschenko? Come on, come on down. All right, we have a special honor this week. All right, Kentschenko, our director of our Center for Arts.
Uh, good evening. Um, thank you for this opportunity to, uh, to have the honor of recognizing some talented young people in our community. Um, the Friends of the Arts Center, the, uh, volunteer and, uh, fundraising support organization for the Center for the Arts, each year, uh, recognizes two outstanding, uh, students, uh, who are planning to go on, uh, to further study and ultimately a career in the arts. And, uh, this year, um, our two recipients, um, I'm, I'm happy to have one of them here with us tonight. Um, Asher Kroll from Waterloo is the recipient of our, uh, Marilyn S. Hurley for, uh, scholarship. And, um, unfortunately, Asher, or fortunately, Asher is already embarking on the next phase, uh, in their life, and Asher is, has relocated to Arizona. But tonight, we do have, uh, the pleasure of having Grace Lidget with us, who is the recipient of the Raymond T. Forsberg Scholarship in the Arts. And, um, so it's my pleasure to present you with this certificate. And very, very briefly, do you want to tell people, uh, what you plan to do after graduation?
I am planning on going to Grace College in Indiana for a degree in graphic design.
Kent, we want to thank you so much. You can, you can keep, keep going. Uh, we want to thank you so... No, I, I meant it in a good way. We want to thank you too, because, um, this is a truly a great example of supporting our young people within our local community. Uh, so thank you so much. Uh, you don't really have scholarship written on your job title, but you do understand the importance of giving back to talented young people. So we appreciate all your efforts. And then last but not least, let's not forget, uh, five-thirty this Wednesday, uh, at the Center for Arts, uh, the Waterloo Youth Council will, will have an open house to talk about all the stuff they've done over the past couple of years. But more importantly, uh, they were able to get a bill passed at the state legislature, uh, which focused on mental health support for young people. There are hundreds of young people within our school system that every day are, are going through different challenges. And this will make sure that there's a QR code on the back of their IDs with services that they can find to be able to help them through whatever situation that's going on. So if you can come out on five-thirty to support our Waterloo Youth Council, just another way that we're investing and sowing into the lives of our young people. We're going to have to figure out something, so, uh, we know we have several people here, uh, that have some earlier things on the council agenda. And so, um, we're going to have to ask those that are standing directly outside the door. Um, once we do some of those earlier things, then we'll call you back in. But we can't have anyone blocking the door because it's a fire exit, too. All right, now it's time for oral, oral presentations. Uh, your opportunity to address the city council on non-agenda-related items. Um, so if it's not on the agenda, uh, come and get us their one area of concern. Um, and please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Uh, remove your hats, and you can address the city council.
Good afternoon. My name is Karen Johnson from Zachary Court in Waterloo. Mr. Greider, last meeting, you made a statement at the end and went on record as saying that the Constitution of the United States was not founded on Christian values or the Christian religion. I believe that's totally incorrect. The Constitution of the United States was taken from books such as The Common Place of the Holy Bible by John Locke, and another, The Spirit of the Laws by Montesquieu. Richard Henry Lee, one of the founders, said that the Constitution was written for more than fourteen hundred references to the Bible for the wording and core principles within that resulting document. Benjamin Franklin wrote in the Pennsylvania Constitution in seventeen seventy-six that you cannot hold office in Pennsylvania unless you believe in the divine authority of both the Old and New Testaments and believe in a future state of rewards and punishments. In his autobiography, he declared himself to be a Christian, saying that any previous denials he may have made were not based on the truth. Thomas Jefferson wanted a nation where practicing religion was totally free. The government could not dictate what religion one had to adhere who, adhere to. Thus the separation of church and state. When interviewed by Daniel Webster, Jefferson said that studying the Bible will make us better citizens, parents, fathers. Whatever makes good men good Christians makes them better citizens. Jefferson began to be misquoted in nineteen forty-seven with the Everson versus Board of Education lawsuit that said there was to be a wall of separation between the church and state. The original statement was in a letter to the Connecticut Danbury Baptist Association in which Jefferson stated, "I contemplate with sovereign reference that the act of the whole American people, which declared that their legislator should make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, thus building a wall of separation between the church and the state, adhering to this expression of supreme will of one nation on behalf of the rights of conscience." The First Amendment prohibits the government from making a national religion. That is required of all. No state established church. The government will not be in the business of running a church. However, back in eighteen oh-one, Jefferson, along with many other government officials, attended church every Sunday in the Hall of Representatives in the Capitol. Another place where the words, his words are taken out of, or words are taken out of context were those of John Adams. He told a group of Muslim ambassadors in London in seventeen ninety-six while working on the Treaty of Tripoli to stop the Muslims from attacking and killing Americans, that the government of the U.S. was not founded on the Christian religion as having an inherent hostility toward Muslims that it was during the Crusades. He said, "We fight you not because you're a Muslim, but because you are terrorizing the American people." The Muslim reply was that they terrorize and kill Americans because they are not Muslim. The truth is the U.S. Constitution was established based on the Christian faith by the founding fathers, despite what education teaches us today.
All right, thank you. Right. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on non-agenda-related items?
My name is Lawrence Stummey. I live at one zero zero eight Lois Lane, uh, in Waterloo. Dr. Michael Blackwell and myself on May first addressed you, the elected representatives of the City of Waterloo, about our concerns regarding your negligence in dealing with certain properties which are creating a personal, financial, safety, and health consequences for the residents in the vicinity of these neglected properties. We approached you to prod you to do whatever is necessary to deal with these blights on the community, and especially to bring relief to the citizens that are affected. We didn't, we did not, we did this, not as politicians for personal benefit, but as faith leaders, who have an obligation to stand up and give voice to the neglected and the vulnerable. If you remember, I challenged the city's handling of a burned-out structure on three oh nine Second Street, neglected since August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, two zero twenty-two. It still is the same. And the multiple-family resident building located on the corner of Lafayette and Vinton, which is still the same and has been that way for almost ten years. Dr. Blackwell addressed you and will again address your responsibility as owner of the former Saint Mary's Catholic Church and School and the abandoned twenty-three acres, this dangerous site formerly known as Chamberlain Manufacturing, also on East Fourth. We will continue to press you, and we expect others, especially those directly suffering from these lapses of the city, to join us, to demand that you commit to bringing relief to those negatively affected by these public nuisances. We must use the financial and legal resources of the city and the neighboring communities. You must procure the necessary financial support of the city, county, state, and federal governments, as well as the financial support of the private industries as funding sources, since these private industries in our community are also, have an important stake in the welfare of their workers. Thank you. I'll leave a copy of my statement.
Thank you. All right, yes, sir.
I'm Michael Blackwell, five one two five Millennium Drive in Seer Falls. The City of Waterloo is guilty of violating its own policy that purports to encourage landlords, tenants, and homeowners to maintain their properties and to reduce blight and enhance the appearance of neighborhoods throughout the city. If citizens do not comply, they are cited and required to abate the nuisance in a timely manner, or otherwise be civilly or criminally penalized. What then should citizens expect of their city government when it is breaching its own code enforcement policy and permitting nuisance and disfigurement to pervade their neighborhoods? The campus of Saint Mary's School, which is under the aegis of the city, exemplifies this violation in a flagrantly egregious way. The property is unkempt, windows are broken, entry is... The property is unkempt, windows are broken, entry is easy, and loitering and squatting are occurring. The building should be demolished, the asbestos safely removed, and the area cleaned up with all deliberate speed. Meanwhile, the property should be sufficiently fenced in or barricaded so that it is inaccessible. If these actions are not done, the city will be complicit with anything untoward that happens there. Furthermore, affordable standalone housing, not tenement apartment structures, ought strongly to be encouraged. In a different but equally violable manner is the lack of completion of the mitigation of the contaminants at the former Chamberlain property. It is unbearably intolerable how long the hazardous materials have been allowed to continue to affect, often unwittingly and imperceptibly, the residents around the property and visitors to the adjacent recreational areas. Once again, it is objectionable that removal of the chemicals, metals, and toxins pervading the soil, air, and groundwater is unfulfilled. What is also disturbing is the lack of thorough updating of the residents in the area and throughout the entire city regarding what federal, state, and local environmental entities are doing or not doing to make the area completely safe. After all, it can take years, i.e. decades, to discover what physiological effects are occurring to the people living there, to which the disparity in cancer rates may attest. Hence, in a very real sense, the city is playing havoc with people's lives. Moreover, as a consequence, property value decreases and quality of life diminishes when unsightly objects and corruptible infestations damage the environment and curtail inhabitants' well-being. Such harm ought to be monitored and duly compensated. We, the people, demand that the City of Waterloo take responsibility in redressing the environmental injustices herein referenced and commit to transparency and accountability in its efforts to alleviate these nuisances. Thank you very much. And here, if I can pass this out to... We'll read it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hello, Michael Bayer, 129 Prospect Circle, Waterloo. Since this year is an odd-numbered year, 2023, I want to remind everyone that we will have local and city elections in November, and that includes the City of Waterloo. On the ballot, we will have races for mayor, wards two and four, and one at-large position. I would encourage everyone present in this room and those watching online to consider running or recruiting someone they know in their ward to run. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mitchell, and I'm going to just say I'm a citizen of Waterloo for now. And the reason why I want to do address this today is because people I know, and people personally I know, have had issues of threats of violence. Obviously, some of you among the council have had that recently as well. I'm here to actually publicly address the issue of stating an address for the sake of these meetings. While I do think it's important to know where our citizens are coming from in the area, I do also think it's important to keep the privacy of people that we have from going public as, for some people, giving out an address would be definitely a very serious safety concern for some people. So, I do would like to see the City of Waterloo address the practice of saying your public address out loud as far as what we could do about it, if you would rather have a sign-up sheet or a different way of forming a validation of where someone is. But I do want to bring this up as there will be a lot of people today who will be saying their addresses out loud in public. And I am in support of not doing that today for the safety and concern of not only people, but other people as well.
So, you said you were a victim of violence or because of...
I have had friends who have been harassed because of their address being public, yes.
So, you have? Okay, thank you.
My name is Dwayne Hylers.
We're going to do this all over again today. Mr. Hylers, I really want to hear what you have to say. Everyone's been in uniformity, you know, whether we agree with them or not. Past practice, since I've been here, and former folks, if you could please remove your hat, everybody in here wants to hear what you have to say. Could you please, sir?
I'll make one little say, and I'll take my hat off.
That's a compromise.
Is that all right?
Yes, sir.
I wear my hat when I go to my lawyer. I wear my hat when I go to the city council. I wear my hat when I go to church. I wear my hat when I talk to my God. And I wear my hat when you have your prayer meeting. This is part of my person, part of my belief, my church, my God. You want me to take my hat off?
Please, and I am listening.
I'll take my hat off.
And I'll restart.
You violated my religious rights to what I am. Now, I'd like to state the problem with the street I have. I want to thank Mr. Nichols, Mr. Boson, for after a year of complaining to get something done. I complained to the city attorney, who is your boss to him and to code enforcement. They got my street cleaned up after almost one year, one year, so that I can drive to my property. Your code enforcement also tagged me on my other property and took me to court for a renter not having a license plate on his camper. This city attorney, right here, refused to notify me of the violation hearing. Still ain't nothing done. I had to pay $300 in court costs for a renter's violation done by the code enforcement, by this attorney, by his two ladies. Also, I found out he had private meetings with other landlords that he's harassing.
Okay, now you're getting into slanderous remarks. If we can just keep it. I'm getting your point. I'm listening to you. If you can just keep it from those I know.
I blame you. You're the one at fault. He works for you.
Okay, then apply it to me then. But keep him. Just apply it to me.
I'm telling you what happens when I had a court hearing with this attorney. You don't want me to speak to him? That's what's happening. The same thing over and over and over. You do nothing? You don't show up at the council meeting? We're glad you're back off vacation. You've been gone so long, nobody knows you. But I want to thank these two gentlemen, after a year, for getting something done. I'm still out there cleaning up the other 10% that they did not get. I lost rent for over a year because your city, you, would not have the code enforcement clean up the street, clean up the street to my property. It's your fault, and it's his fault. And he says, "Well, I'll meet with you." And then he says, "Well, I said maybe I'd meet with you." You guys are covering up each other. You need to retire, and he needs to find a new job. Let's get something done for the citizens out here. Instead of running around, going on vacation, and whatever you're doing, we don't see you. And not one time have you or him called me and said, "Let's meet and let's solve the problem."
I wonder why.
Not one time.
Your three minutes are up. I wonder why. But thank you so much, sir, for your comments. We appreciate it. Thank you.
You need to retire. Find another job.
All right, yes, sir.
Good evening, Todd Obadahl, 124 Amity Drive. I'm here to address an issue that came up at the last meeting. I'd made a request for an opinion from the city attorney. Was informed that he'd already given an opinion on the matter. I had specifically asked for it because the last time the city attorney had given an opinion was before a Supreme Court case, which I cited, had been determined and which changed the landscape. And I was wanting that information, not just for me and the public, but for the city council members as well. The city attorney is hired by the city council and works for the city council and for the public's interest. It is a city attorney's opinion on matters of legislation that matters. It doesn't matter what an attorney from Des Moines says. An unnamed attorney from Des Moines with an unnamed retainer or an unspecified cost to the city. We have a city attorney for that, and that city attorney also gives protection to the members up here by him signing off on the legality, constitutionality of any ordinance that is put forth. Some random attorney from another city does not provide that for the council. I don't want this council getting into any difficulties personally because of performing their jobs up here. But it is very disturbing that the council didn't want to hear in public, for the public, what the city attorney's position was on the matter that was being discussed. It is very concerning that this city council decided to take a recess instead of simply displaying what a vote was on an issue at a meeting not so long ago. The public has a right to know. And if we can't see what a vote is, if we can't hear from what our city attorney thinks on issues, what is the point of having public meetings? With that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Obadahl. Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council, mayor, and staff on non-agenda-related items? Going a second time. Oh, yes. You have, okay. You have something pertaining to the agenda? Okay, okay. All right, we'll get you when we get to that item. All right, council, do you have anything?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
So, also on Wednesday, which seems to be a busy day, we will have our second public forum on gun violence here in Waterloo at the Jubilee Freedom Center. I know lots of folks are very interested in crime and what we're doing to deal with the issue of gun violence. So, I'd strongly encourage them to come to the Jubilee Freedom Center at 5:30 to 6:30. We're going to be having an open and broad discussion. We're also going to be planning some summer events because what we heard from our last meeting was that folks want kids and young adults to have things to do in the summer. I completely agree, as the school year winds down. So, I am hoping that folks come ready to put some hands together and we can start figuring something out. So, again, that's 5:30 on Wednesday at the Jubilee Freedom Center to talk about crime and gun violence in our community. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to say thank you to you and to the city council for your support in the loss of our mom. Really, the plant was beautiful. The words that you offered were beautiful. And our family is really grateful. Thank you so much. And a formal thank you will be coming. It's taking us a while to go through things, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I had a quick question for Mr. Knudsen. Mind, sir? I was curious, sir, if you could give us an update on when the Shawless Bridge project and the opening to the entrance to the casino will be finished?
Jamie Knudsen, city engineer. I wish you to let me know this earlier, Mr. Boson. I'd have checked with that. I have the schedule back in my office. I don't have it on me right now. Right now, the last I knew was they were looking right after Memorial Day, second week in June, somewhere in there.
Because originally, it was mid-May, I thought.
Yes.
I drive by there all the time, and I haven't seen a lot of activity. That's why.
We've had issues with one particular contractor. They've torn out portions of the work three times now.
That's sad to hear.
So, it is. But we want to make sure it gets done correctly.
And then lastly, and the reason I bring this up is that I think they were a little premature when they put the detour signs up for the roundabout because if you're going down, if you're westbound on Orange from Dyser, from my area, and you get to Hess, it says KOA Campground straight ahead. And it takes you to 21, 21 back around to get to the KOA as opposed to making a right turn on Hess and driving one mile and you're at the campground.
We can take another look at it, but some of the additional signing that went up was specifically asked for by KOA.
I understand, but I think with our timeframe changing and with Memorial Day weekend coming up, and if we're looking at maybe closing that again like the second week in June, I think it would really be...
We'll take a look at it.
I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. And the second thing I wanted to talk about on a more positive note is, a week ago last Sunday, I attended Nile, the Northern Iowa Youth Orchestra, directed by Mr. Childs. And it was probably one of the better concerts I've ever been to. I truly believe that. Thank you for your dedication to these students. The skill and the talent that you bring out of these high school kids is second to none. And thanks for your dedication to these kids.
Thank you, Mr. Boson.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comments closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item number eight under the consent agenda and in addition to the Bose payment on 1A1, May 8th, 2023, in the amount of $3,396,207.23, and May 15th, in the amount of $1,294,702.71.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk? Roll call vote. Sorry, up there?
That's public.
That was public comments, okay. Counsel, electronic vote?
Make work.
All right, Mr. Greider.
Yes, just so we can move forward. I'll figure it out.
Yeah, so that...
There it goes. Never mind.
To approve the consent agenda that was approved unanimously by Council 7-0, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Hold on. We have some hires. Is Danielle Danu here? What about Tara Thomas-Getman? Is she here? Hi, Tara. We recently, I know before, on a part-time basis, but she's been doing an incredible job bringing information out to the community. So, that job is now full-time. And so, we want to thank her for all her efforts. We thank you for joining the Waterloo family, and we look forward to an incredible relationship and you joining the family. So, we give her a round of applause. All right, am I good? Everybody? All right, we have some board appointments for the Design Review Board. Michelle Weber, if you're here, please stand up. For the ADA Compliance Board, Terry Conrad, if you're here, stand up. For the General Contractor Board of Licensing Examiners and Appeals Board, William Kugler, Ross Samick, Deb Waterman, Dennis Wilson, if you're here, please stand up. And for our Housing Authority Board, Diane Grebik, Grebik, I believe? Sorry if I pronounced it wrong. But we want to thank you all for stepping up to be a part of the solution and working towards, working with our community board. So, let's give them a round of applause. All right, someone take number one, please?
Number eight, sorry, for the consent agenda.
Okay, so we're going to take number eight.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving submission of the US Department of Transportation Safe Streets for all SS4A grant in the amount of not to exceed $10 million for development of a comprehensive safety action plan and committing to providing the required 20% loco match and implementing the action plan with a target date of 2045 to achieve zero traffic fatalities and severe injuries.
Second.
Yes, sir.
David Deeds, on behalf of JSA Development, 215 East 4th Street, Waterloo. First of all, let me say I'm very much in support of this grant. I'm pursuing funds like this. So, this is a great thing. However, I would request that you, as council members, and ensure that there is a robust public input process into not only the application, but the actual plan itself. And so that we take full advantage of these federal funds as they're available right now. There are a lot of these types of things that we should be pursuing. But let's make sure we do it right with those federal monies. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And for those who don't know, part of the Smart City Plan was them to help us to be able to write grants as well. So, they're offering their expertise, along with Mohammed in the Public Works Department, our traffic engineer. And so, this will be the first. And this is just a, not even an implementation grant, but a study grant for the first part of it. So, that's what this is focused on. So, council, any other questions? This is an electronic vote, so council, please. Uh, this is a electronic vote, so council, please state your support or non-support of a federal grant. All right, that is, uh, approved unanimously with a seven oh vote. All right, thank you, can someone take number one, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I would like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and as for our fiscal year ending twenty twenty-three, uh, budget amendments.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to a twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget amendments? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
The motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving FYE twenty twenty-three budget amendment.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Uh, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
Just like to thank Ms. Woods for all of her work on this. Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Wood, our, uh, finance manager, um, thank you so much for all of your efforts as well. Um, council, this is, uh, electronic vote, please share your vote. All right, that is approved unanimously with a seven oh vote. Uh, can someone take number two, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication notice of public hearing on the FY twenty twenty-three Gates Park Improvement Contract number ten seventy-six.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to, um, Gates Park, uh, bids? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file any oral and written comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid documents, form of contract, et cetera, and authorize them to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council questions? Uh, this is, uh, electronic vote, uh, please state your votes. All right, that was approved with a seven oh vote. Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file and instruct the city clerk to read the bids and refer to the leisure services director for review.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Engineer's estimate was, um, for division one, seven million, um, seven million, eight thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and twenty cents. Our division two vote, excuse me, estimate was six hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred twenty dollars, seventy-five cents. And then division one plus division two is seven million, six hundred twenty-one thousand, eight hundred twenty-seven dollars, twenty-five cents. Our first bidder was Peters Construction Corporation of Ottawa, Iowa, with quite a fair percentage of security. Their bid amount for division one was eight million, eight hundred ninety-three thousand, eight hundred thirty-eight dollars, ninety-nine cents. And alternate one was, alternate one was six hundred seventy-nine thousand, five hundred thirty-three dollars and forty-four cents. The second bidder was WRH Incorporated of Amana, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount for division one was nine million, six hundred thirty-six thousand, three hundred sixty dollars, forty cents. For alternate one, their bid amount was six hundred eight thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-five cents. Our third and final bidder was Wooddrift Construction of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount for division one was eight million, seven hundred thirty-one thousand dollars. Alternate one was six hundred thirty-one thousand, one hundred seventy-two dollars and eighty-two cents.
All right, thank you. Uh, can someone take number three, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and that's for the request by the Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity to locally designate four fifteen Walnut Street as a historic landmark.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to four fifteen Walnut Street as a historic landmark? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and recommendation of approval of the Planning and Programming, uh, Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission and the Historic Reservation Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time in ordinance to locally designate four fifteen Walnut Street as a historic landmark.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council questions? This is an electronic vote, so please, uh, cast your vote electronically. All right, it passed unanimously, seven oh. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Council, please, uh, cast your vote. It passed unanimously, seven oh.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made, uh, with the second. Uh, council, please cast your votes. All right, that passed, uh, with a seven oh vote. Can someone take number four, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and that is for the city limits urban revitalization area, CLURA plan.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and, uh, receive and file recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
Um, I am just really, really, um, thankful for the hard work that the planning department has done. Um, with this new adoption, we are going to offer not only housing incentives, which we, we desperately need, uh, but we will also be offering incentives for childcare facilities, both new and existing if they expand. So this is a, a fundamentally good piece of legislation, uh, to help two of the biggest needs that we have in our community and I'm very thankful for the work the planning department did.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'm, I'm strongly opposed to the inclusion of multifamily dwellings into the CLURA. The CLURA has always been one and two family dwellings and now we're, under, under this change, we're including multifamily dwellings as three units and up for the hundred percent tax abatement for three years. Multifamily dwellings used to be, used to be assessed at ninety percent of their assessed value like commercial property. Through the, through the state of Iowa, they are, they've been reduced to residential property rates at fifty-four percent. So we're already losing thirty-six percent of the value in property taxes for multifamily dwellings. We've got an item coming up in the, later on in the agenda for, uh, for infill development for four twelveplexes, uh, which at five thousand dollars a unit is sixty thousand dollars per twelveplex or two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Keep in mind, we bond for that money for infill development. We borrow that money to, to, to make those payments. So if we, in each one of these units currently that are on, on that area, the city's share of their property taxes is about eleven thousand, four hundred dollars is what the city receives. By adding the, the three years at a hundred percent tax abatement, if you figure out when we see positive cash flow from the taxes that they will be paying to offset the five thousand dollars per unit, just to offset the five thousand dollars per unit is five years because we're sixty thousand dollars and we're, and we're only getting back, when they start paying taxes, eleven thousand, four hundred dollars a year to, into the city coffers. Now, when you add CLURA on top of that, plus your year behind your taxes, we're at nine years plus before we receive and, and start breaking even from just our economic development incentives. And I, I truly believe, I brought this up at, at planning and zoning, I, yeah, I, I have to be honest with you, I went down in flames, but that's okay. Uh, it was, one of the comments that was made is that, uh, by one of the commissioners is that the city should be willing to take on short-term pain for long-term gain. And I don't disagree with that, but I think we're going to be seeing a lot of short-term pain in the next couple of budget years. And I don't think we're helping our budget when most of our growth is either in a TIF district, a CLURA or a CURA, and we're not, we're not raising the value of homes and, and the majority of, of, of our property taxes that, that are supporting the general fund are on the backs of the homeowners. So I, I don't, I don't support including multifamily dwellings in this. Thank you.
Thank you. We've already, we've already closed the, the public hearing portion of this, so we offer comments from citizens, uh, we waited, we waited a second time and then we closed the public hearing, but.
Hard to hear back there and it's my first time to city council meeting.
Okay.
That's a question.
I'm, I'm sorry, um, if you would like to contact my office tomorrow or I can get your information and know who could call you back directly, um, we would do that.
Is this not a, a public hearing right now?
It's a public hearing, but we have a, a process. Um, and so we, the first thing we did was to make a motion, um, to open up, to open up, uh, the hearing when that people can come in and give their comments. After we do that, they made a motion to close the hearing for the public comments portion of it. So we, we are legally responsible for public hearings to offer and try to get input from citizens. After we close the hearing, then it goes to the city council for delivery.
They didn't last very long and it's, I'm way in the back, there's not enough seating for everyone, it's very hard to hear back there and you guys are just like moving us through. So, I just wanted to say because I just had some questions.
We're out of protocol right now, but I would be willing to call you back myself tomorrow morning to talk about your questions.
It would be nice to have public support to know who else feels like they have some concerns like that too.
We have a lot of people here for, I think, uh, uh, other reasons too, but those that want to come in, I will call you if you, is that your telephone number? If you leave me your telephone number, I will call you back myself in the morning. If you want to, if you don't want to, that's fine, but I will call you.
I want to speak, I'm sorry, but I feel like this has been just rushed through.
We, we've been doing CLURA, we've had public meetings about this, we've had conversations about this throughout. Um, we've had, uh, planning and zoning, this has gone through as well, so the, the inclination that it's kind of rushed through, this has been something we've been doing for several years now, so.
People had it hard when they came in, so I just wondered if you all had some concerns in the public hearing, so I just wanted to know.
All right, so, um, council, any other discussion? All right, um, passed unanimously, I believe, right? All right, seven oh. Um, all right, can we do number five, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, a request by the city of Waterloo to vacate approximately point eight acres of University Avenue Frontage Road located near University Avenue and Progress Avenue, subject to the retention of a permanent public and private utility easement on, above and under the vacated area in front of the former Kmart site at three eight one zero University Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, is there anyone in the public that would like to talk about, uh, oops, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We're just, we're just opening.
We're, we're, we're opening up public hearings, so all those in support of the opening public hearing?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, ma'am.
Karen Johnson, Zachary Court in Waterloo. I was just curious, why, why are we doing this? What's the purpose of it? What's going to happen to this? I don't understand.
Mr. Anderson.
I know exactly where the location is, I just don't understand what's going to happen.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. I don't know if they can bring up the map, um, that's in there. This is a portion of the old Frontage Road that was in place when Kmart was there.
Right.
Um, with the reconstruction of University Avenue, there's no reason for the Frontage Road portion to be there, so we're basically vacating it so it can be redeveloped as part of the site, um, which on item number eight is planned to be developed into three outlots. Um, we did add in a right-in, right-out as part of the University Avenue reconstruction to put more access points into this, but there's no reason to have a public street there. Um, it'll just be part of the private lot.
Okay, thank you, I understand that.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that has questions about, um, this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file and consider and pass for the first time, an ordinance approving a request by the city of Waterloo to voc- to vacate approximately point eight acres of University Avenue Frontage Road located near University Avenue and Progress Avenue, subject to the retention of a permanent public and private utility easement on, above and under the vacated area, generally located in front of the former Kmart site at three eight one zero University Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, questions on this item?
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question. It had to do with, uh, it said prior to coming to the council, all utilities easements needed to be worked out. I'm just curious if all that's been done.
Mr. Anderson.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Um, in looking at the utilities right now, um, without knowing the exact, uh, configuration of the outlawt development, uh, we just put an easement over the entire portion right now. We could come back later and vacate portions of that. Um, some of the utilities may only serve that site and again, depending upon how they reconfigure it for the development, um, some of them may stay as is, some of them may move, so we'll, we'll tackle that when we develop them.
Okay, and then when I read it originally, like, last Monday, when it came out, it, it said the engineer's estimate on the value of the street vacate was like four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, but in the development agreement, uh, coming up to us, it says the, that it's valued at a hundred thousand dollars. Can you just explain the difference between that?
The developers actually had an appraisal, um, document or pre-appraisal type thing done on it to, to look at the value a, a little bit better and it came back at the hundred thousand amount.
Their, their amount is a hundred thousand for taxable purposes, but ours was four hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
We just use the price per square foot of the assessed value of the entire site.
Okay, all right, well, that explains it. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bozen, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Uh, council, other questions? All right, this is an electronic vote, please cast it. All right, that passed unanimously, seven oh. Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, please, uh, cast your vote electronically. All right, it passed unanimously, seven oh.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and Like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, please cast your vote if you don't have any questions. Alright, thank you, uh, that passed unanimously as well. Alright, could someone take number six, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and ask for the request by Nihad Masich. To vacate, sell and convey approximately one thousand four hundred and twenty-eight square feet of city-owned right-of-way. Uh, subject to the retention of a public utility easement in the M1 Light Industrial District. Located southeast of three twelve Cote Avenue and, or two, Nihad Masich. To the, in the amount of seven hundred dollars and Alyssa Ronnie in the amount of two hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this, um, uh, one thousand four hundred and twenty-eight square feet of city-owned right-of-way? Anyone? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to receive, file and consider and pass for the first time. An ordinance approving a request by Nihad Masich. To vacate approximately one thousand four hundred and twenty-eight square feet of city-owned right-of-way. Located southeast of three twelve Cote Avenue. Uh, subject to the retention of a permanent public utility easement over, under, across and upon the vacate area.
Seconds.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, questions? Alright, this is, uh, an electronic vote, so please cast your vote. Alright, that passed, uh, seven oh, thank you, council.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, please, cast your vote. Alright, that passed unanimously.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
That motion, uh, has been made with the second. Uh, council, please cast, uh, your vote.
Sorry.
Alright, that passed, uh, seven oh.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a mo-, uh, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of, of vacated alley southeast of three twelve Cote Avenue to Nihad Masich. In the amount of seven hundred dollars and Alyssa Ronnie in the amount of two hundred and seventy-two dollars. Subject to the retention of a permanent public utility easement over, under, across and upon the areas to be conveyed. And authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said deeds.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Council, questions? Alright, please cast your vote. Alright, that passed, uh, seven oh, could someone take number seven, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Like to make a motion to receive and file, uh, proof of publication of notice of public hearing. And that is for a request by Raymond Shepherd to vacate, sell and convey approximately nine thousand five hundred and sixty square feet of city-owned right-of-way. In the R2 one and two family residence district located north of one oh eight Bishop Avenue to Raymond Shepherd and Kenneth Cox. The amount of two thousand dollars, Connie Johnson, the amount of five hundred dollars and Ryan and Kelly Wilkinson, in, in the amount of five hundred dollars.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to number seven on the agenda to vacate and sell, uh, some city-owned right-of-way? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file, uh, recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file and consider and pass for the first time. An ordinance approving a request by Raymond Shepherd to vacate approximately nine thousand five hundred and sixty square feet of city-owned right-of-way. In the R2 one and two family residence district located north of one oh eight Bishop Avenue. Subject to the retention of a permanent public utility easement over, under and across and upon the east twenty-five feet thereof.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, council, questions? Uh, it's electronic vote, please cast your vote. Alright, that passed unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, council, please cast your vote. Alright, that passed unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
Oh, wait, we just. Nope, nope, you're right.
Okay, sorry.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, electronic vote, please, council. Alright, thank you, that passed unanimously, now the last part.
Alright, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing sale and conveyance, conveyance of a vacated alley north of one oh eight Bishop Avenue to Raymond Shepherd and Kenneth Cox. The amount of two thousand dollars, Connie Johnson, the amount of five hundred dollars and Ryan and Kelly Wilkinson, the amount of five hundred dollars. Subject to the retention of a permanent public utility easement over, under, across and upon the east twenty-five feet thereof. And authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said deeds.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, council, questions? Alright, please cast your vote. Alright, thank you, that passed unanimously, seven oh. Number eight, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing. And that is for a sale and conveyance of city property located at thirty-eight forty University Avenue in the amount of one dollar. With the phased development agreement with Mann Road Storage LLC. For the redevelopment of twenty-eight ten and thirty-eight forty University Avenue. With the minimum assessment agreement of four million five hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred dollars. For the construction of a climate-controlled storage units and a mixed-use commercial building with a tax rebate schedule of ten years at fifty percent.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there anyone that'd like to speak to this, uh, development, um, agreement that we currently have for, uh, storage? Going a second time? Yes, ma'am.
No.
No, it's Kmart.
It's Kmart, sir.
It's Kmart.
Alright, um, any other comments?
Wait. No, it's not. It's Kmart, okay, got me confused, yeah, it's Kmart.
You're good?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I move to close hearing, receive and file oral comments.
Wait, is that going a second time? Is there anyone else? Alright, please continue.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close hearing, receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of city right-of-way adjacent to thirty-eight forty University Avenue. Subject to the retention of a public and private utility easement on, above and under the area to be conveyed. In the amount of one dollar to Mann Road Storage LLC and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I, I have some, actually I just have some issues with the, the timeframe on the development agreement. Phase one is tax rebate of fifty percent for ten years. And then, then they have five years to start phase two, which is a mixed-use commercial residential. They start that within that timeframe, they get five years, the commercial, phase two gets five years at fifty percent tax abatement. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Anderson, but phase one gets that also. So that extends, that extends phase one to fifteen years. Then there's phase three and four. And they have fifteen years to start phase three and four, which is in line with the fifteen years of tax abatement that, that the original Kmart building is getting. They too would get five years at fifty percent tax abatements and that would be added on to phase one. Which would lengthen that out to a twenty-five years development agreement at fifty percent. Now, if phase two and three, according to the development agreement, are done by a third party and not by the original developer. They would get their five, fifty percent tax abatement for five years. And then we would rebate the, also that amount of money back to the original developer in phase one. So not only would they be getting fifty percent tax abatements for those phase two and three. If, if that wasn't deeded back to the original developer, then the city was going to cut them a check. For that amount of money back to the original developer, is that correct?
Noel Anderson, community planning and development director, so the phase one is the Kmart building, the storage units, uh, for ten years at fifty percent. Then if they build the phase two, which is a mixed-use building, um, which would have to come through site plan amendment approval. Um, then they can gain another five years on the phase one or the, the original Kmart building. And they get five years on the phase two, which would be the mixed-use building. Phases three and four would be done by a separate amendment, um, and they would be eligible for five years to fifty percent. That would not go back on to the phase one building, so they would still be at the, the fifteen max.
But also then, then why is there language in there that states that we would, that we would rebate back to phase one?
So the, the developer, um, for the development of the future outlots, if they don't, um, build it themselves and they have someone else build it. They're keeping the rebates for themselves, so that would be some, something they would negotiate with a third party. So we'll only be paying out rebates for it, it'll just be either to this developer. Or if they give up the rights, it would be to a, a different developer. We're just giving five years of fifty percent for the future phases.
So the phase three and four does not go back to the original developer? Because it, it states in that development agreement that, that we were going to be.
They're, they're, they'll retain the rights. They'll retain the rights to the rebates, whether or not they give those up. So it'll be similar to the Schuetz Hospital, um, where the developer toured on the building. He actually gets the rebates from those projects being built. The developers of this site by creating the future lots would get the rebates from future buildings being built.
Okay, because I, I believe I read that, that under phase three and four, that it also goes back to phase one.
Yeah, I, I went back and reread it after you asked, it, it does seem a little confusing, but it, it says by a separate amendment and the intent was definitely for the five years of fifty percent.
But my question is, is that if they come back for phase three and four for a separate amendment? They could theoretically get five more years per, per development agreement also added on to the original development?
I mean, I, they, they could request anything they want, it's not in the development agreement that they would get it for the phase one.
Okay.
Would just be for those phases three and four.
And the other issue that I had is the, is the, in the development agreement, and I emailed you about that and, and, and I guess, I like Mr. Mr. Anderson's comments, we can respectfully disagree. Uh, and that was on the infill development, uh, the, the five thousand dollars for the apartments or the, or the residential units above on phase two. Because originally infill development was six fifty-seven A properties, it was vacant lots. It was to get them on the tax rolls, it was to stop mowing them, it was to stop doing snow removal. And then we extended it further and then we went it to privately owned lots. And, and then we've extended it again and I, I think we're, we're coloring kind of outside the lines on infill development. Because I, I, in my personal opinion, I don't consider an apartment in the middle of a parking lot in the Kmart Plaza. As infill development for housing. But the development agreement calls for five thousand dollars per unit, uh, on phase two, on top of the tax abatements. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Do you, and know how many units that they were intending to build?
We do not at this point, no.
Okay. So I, personally, like I said, I don't feel that that's infill development, but you and I disagree on that. And I have an issue with the, with the length of time on the, on the development agreement, but thank you for your answer, sir.
Respectable, agree to disagree.
That was on my email and I, I, I agree with him on that, we do agree to disagree.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Do we have, um, a anticipated duration of construction? So when will this be completed?
Development agreement. So they would begin the first phase, um, within six months, it says in development agreement be done within, I think, eighteen. Um, we extended that out from, from twelve months from before, just because it's taken materials for some construction projects to get a, a little bit longer to get here. Then they have five years to start the phase two. Obviously, I think they were, they want to start on it faster, but they want to give themselves time to develop that, um, the specifics of that.
Great, thank you.
Right.
Sir.
Another question.
Yes, sir.
For you know, um, so just to, uh, be clear, the, uh, four million, um, four point five million of the minimum assessed agreement, that's for the all phases? Or the phase one and two, or is it just for the?
That'll be just for phase one, so we'll gain two point five eight eight million out there right away.
So I mean, as I was going through and do the calculations, it seemed, um, like based, uh, compared to what we're getting now in taxation. Um, if that's just phase one, um, including the fifty percent rebate. We're going to be probably about, uh, twenty-one point three percent more in tax take even with the fifty percent rebate.
Okay, that sounds right. Yes.
I have one more question for everyone to answer.
Anyone else? Mr. Bowden.
I just want to point out that, that is also included in the University Avenue TIF.
Correct.
So it's not like this, this development outside of the original taxes and the taxes on the land. Is, is going to go towards a general fund for property tax relief, correct?
Correct, it would stay within the TIF unless we'd release money or something like that. And, and obviously we put the TIF over this corridor specifically to address some of the large vacant buildings.
Okay, and, and, and because the University Avenue TIF one was voted on in the last council. That is a large TIF. I mean, it encompasses a lot of, a lot of area. Because like the thirty-two units at Edison School are in the University Avenue TIF. So we're not going to really even see property taxes with, with new construction of thirty-two buildings. Just, just in new homes, so I just want to make that point also, thank you.
You know, and the hope is too, um, when we take a look at University Avenue prior to us redeveloping that area, we lost so many businesses. We lost, uh, Kmart, not like the rest of the nation didn't, uh, but we also, uh, lost the Hy-Vee. Uh, and so hopefully, uh, keeping that money in there and having, uh, the ability to utilize some infrastructure will create, uh, more energy and, uh, positive growth. So I see both of the, uh, sides of the argument, but I don't vote. Uh, council, uh, please cast your vote on this resolution. Alright, so this passed six one, uh, of course, Mr. Bowden is not in favor of this one. Uh, so let's go, um, next.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, to, he has to finish up the last portion.
I move to adopt a resolution approving a development agreement with Mann Storage LLC. For the redevelopment of property at thirty-eight forty University Avenue with the minimum assessment agreement of four million five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Not, three hundred and sixty-one, nine hundred dollars. And a tax rebate schedule of ten years at fifty percent. And authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Alright, that motion has been made with the second. Uh, questions, council? Alright, uh, please cast your, uh, vote. Alright, thank you, and once again, that was, uh, six one vote, uh, and it's up there. Uh, Mr. Bowden cast the, uh, long no vote, so thank you all. Uh, let's do number nine, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing. And that is for the sale and conveyance of city-owned property, land exchange and approval of an infrastructure development agreement with North Crossing LLC. For the master buildout of North Crossing Retail and Medical District.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this, uh, development at, uh, North Crossing?
Uh, Mayor, council, uh, Eric Johnson, Beecher Law Firm, here on behalf of the developer. Um, we've been working on this project for probably over a year with, uh, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Knutson and outside council. I don't want to make a long council meeting longer, but I want to say, I'm here to answer any questions that might be, um, out there about this, if they haven't been answered already.
Is there anyone in the, uh, public with questions? The old Logan Plaza, old Logan Plaza site, which is North Crossing, I swear, I was supposed to never say that again.
And north and east of that too.
Yeah, but if she wants the geographic area, we say, go to that, we're not.
On the east side will be an apartment complex, there'll be a daycare center and a senior center. And then the rest will be more commercially oriented, like the, uh, development that's already happened out there.
They will also be eligible for the five thousand.
Yeah, um, so, Mr., Mr. Johnson, if you want to come forward, uh, state your name and address for the record and, um, let us know your questions.
Sorry, Karen Johnson, Zachary Court. So this development would also be eligible for the five thousand dollars per unit? Not per building, but per unit?
We'll have Mr. Anderson address that.
Noel Anderson, community planning and development director, so the Annex Group project, um, was not considered infill development. Um, so that one, uh, we are giving the land for one dollar, which we had acquired in partnership with, uh, the developer that's doing this next phase. Um, for the hundred and eighty unit, uh, apartment complex.
Do we have any idea how big these apartments are? One bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom?
I can definitely get you, I don't have that with me today, I can get you drawings of that and, and layouts of the, of the floor plans.
Well, where I'm going with that is if, I know there's a, another unit coming over by, um, Kimball and Ridgeway in that corner. Where the development is one-bedroom units. We need, families need more than one bedroom. So if it's a one-bedroom unit complex, who are they going to help?
I, I know the one up here is, has at least one and two bedroom, it may even have some three bedrooms, so.
So ma'am, there'd be a, there'd be a variety from one to, Johnson, from one to three, one to three, so. Alright, um. Yep, you still, you got about a minute and thirty seconds left.
Having, have, is the mic on? Having worked at the Iowa Department of Human Services with families in need for thirty-one years. The biggest issue is the apartments are too small. They need more than one or two bedrooms to house their families comfortably. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Right, is there anyone else that, um, may have questions about, uh, this development? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'd like to make a motion approving the resolution, maybe authorizing the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located near the intersection of Heath Street and Logan Avenue, Highway sixty three, East Ward to East Fourth Street, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, council questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'm sorry, someone else? Oh, okay. I just had a um, we had a nice meeting with with Mr. Anderson. We talked about this development agreement. I had a couple of questions and and it had to do with the timeframe on the payback, and you were gonna look at that and get back to me on that?
Mr. Anderson.
I know I know it said, when when we figured the money out, originally a million dollars for two years, one point six million for years after that. And we and we figured the twelve million seven hundred thousand with the five hundred thousand dollar maybe contingency, that it was like eight years, but yet the development agreement calls for ten.
And and I did notice that.
You're getting your uh, squats workout tonight.
I need I need some steps. I did notice that there is a discrepancy in the two numbers, so it is the thirteen point five million dollar number um, for the costs out here. Um, and essentially, we will pay them back uh, for the all the development that's occurring out there. This will create about twenty two lots. As we noted, there's a couple of projects happening right away. Be very exciting for the entire area. We'll be paying them back through the TIF proceeds itself at one million dollars um, this upcoming July, a million dollars in July of twenty twenty four. And then it'll be amortized over the remaining eight years um, for the amount due back with the interest. It's about one point six million dollars a year.
Okay, and then uh, my other my question was in your office that day, is where we came up with the seven and a half percent interest?
And I'll have Mr. Johnson address that.
That was negotiated with the bank. That was the lowest interest they could get, and trust me, my client wanted to, I mean, works as hard as they can to get the lowest interest. Uh, certainly, as time goes on, if rates change, he will refinance and take advantage of lower rates.
I appreciate that, and I do and I do appreciate the fact that that these are accurate figures on how much it's gonna cost to put these roads and and infrastructure, and so we're 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 just bait really paying him back for his investment.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I need more time to talk to my constituents about this. I missed because of my mom's death. Um, so I missed the meetings you had. So I just wanted to voice that I needed to think about this more and talk with them about this.
Unfortunately, uh, you'll still have to vote.
Oh.
I I have to tell you a story about my my first uh, you were there for my first meeting uh, with the uh, the uh, the uh, planning meeting uh, and the the Walgreens, I believe. Uh, I learned the one up near uh, on um, Hope Avenue. I learned a very important lesson that night, but I won't do to her what you did to me.
Oh, my God. Yes, bear me, please.
But if you would like, um, even beyond, if you want to uh, set up a meeting uh, with the developer and with some residents, perfectly, perfectly fine to do so, but they need to get moving on this project. Counsel, any other questions? So for this item, electronic vote, please cast your vote. And I believe your door is always open too, right, Eric? We need a reason for abstention. All right, so we have um, we had six um, yeses and one abstention. The abstention, since it was not a conflict of interest, uh, is counted as a yes, but it's also duly noted. Uh, you had questions? All right, who was?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm I'd like to make a resolution approving an infrastructure development agreement with North Crossing LLC for the master buildout of North Crossing Retail and Medical District with a land exchange located near the intersection of Heath Street and Logan Avenue, Highway sixty three, East Ward to East Fourth Street, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, and I assume same questions about this as well. Counsel, other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Not a question. I just want to say that I'm extremely excited about the development happening in this area. Thank you so much, Noel and Eric, for the work that you've done on this. This is really gonna be fantastic for the north side.
Yeah, and we, prior to even just the changes that have taken place, uh, you wouldn't believe how many times uh, we were told that nothing positive can happen uh, in this area. So it's so grateful to see the partnership with the develop, and I mean, we've been talking about being able to work with some of the Verden Creek issues uh, over there to make that area uh, more developed. Where we've been talking about whether it's people within the neighborhood or if it is nurses and people uh, that go to the school having uh, a good looking place to actually uh, live in. So this is really an exciting project, and we're very excited uh, about the potential and all the other development uh, that's going to continue to happen there over the future. So uh, council, time to vote. I heard the baby. I heard a yes outside. All right, thank you. Uh, that passed um, seven oh with the councilwoman's concerns noted as well. All right, uh, number ten is the last of our um, public hearings. Yes. I just said there without.
Yep, miss, uh, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for fiscal year twenty twenty three, East End Run and Drive Reconstruction Project, contract number one zero eight four.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The public hearing is now open. Uh, is there anyone that uh, would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive uh, motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specification bid documents, form a contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, council questions? Right, um, this is uh, electronic vote. Please cast your vote.
Nope, I would say yes.
All right, so that's unanimous. We have uh, seven yes, seven yes, seven people that voted yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Madam clerk. Jamie, you happy to have those on you?
Our estimate for Division one is three million twenty thousand seven hundred ninety dollars and forty five cents. Our estimate for Division two is one hundred forty five thousand forty eight dollars ninety cents. Our estimate for Division one plus Division two is three million one hundred sixty five thousand eight hundred thirty nine dollars thirty five cents. Our first bidder is Peterson Contractors Incorporated of Ryanbeck, Iowa. They provide a five percent security. Their bid amount for Division one is two million three hundred forty thousand five hundred sixty nine dollars twenty five cents. For Division two is one hundred forty five thousand five hundred ninety one dollars seventy cents. And the bid amount for Division one and Division two is two hundred forty, excuse me, two million four hundred eighty six thousand one hundred sixty dollars ninety five cents. Our second bidder is Boomerang Corporation of Animals, Iowa. They provide a five percent security. Their bid amount for Division one was two million seven hundred forty seven thousand four hundred fifteen dollars and twenty cents. For Division two was one hundred nine thousand seven hundred sixty two dollars, and for Division one and Division two is two million eight hundred fifty seven thousand one hundred seventy seven dollars and twenty cents. Our third bidder was Owen Contracting Incorporated of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provide a five percent security. The bid amount for Division one is two million three hundred ninety two thousand eighty three dollars seventy cents. For Division two, one hundred forty seven thousand one hundred thirty seven dollars. And for Division one and two, it's two million five hundred thirty nine thousand two hundred twenty dollars and seventy cents. Our fourth and final bidder was Midwest Contracting Incorporated of Piazza, Iowa. They provide a five percent security. Their bid amount for Division one is two million four hundred twenty three thousand five hundred thirty five dollars ninety nine cents. For Division two, one hundred twenty seven thousand one hundred ninety four dollars ninety seven cents. And then finally, Division one and two, two million five hundred fifty thousand seven hundred thirty dollars ninety six cents.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution awarding uh, approving award of bid to Peterson Contractors, Inc. of Ryanbeck, Iowa, in the amount of two million four hundred eighty six thousand one hundred sixty dollars and ninety five cents, approving this contract bonds and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the fiscal year twenty twenty three, East End Martin Drive Reconstruction Project Contract Number one zero eight four, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. There was one question that uh, we were asked. Jamie, does this change with the with these bids? Does this have any impact on Broadway? Uh, that was a question we were asked about.
Sure. Jamie Johnson, City Engineer. Um, just to give you a little bit of background. If you remember, council members, a month ago, we had rejected one bid um, due to budget constraints. That was an HMA and a PC alternate included Broadway and San Martin. Decided to go ahead and rebid just San Martin this time, to try to get something done, concrete only. For whatever reason, we had the four bids that you heard. We also had another bid that was rejected because it was turned in after the time. Uh, just so taxpayers and council know, we saved about nine hundred and forty thousand dollars by going ahead and rebidding this as concrete only versus the previous bid for just San Martin. So, and I was looking at this today, Mayor, to get to your question. I am hoping, and again, I'm looking through the finances, but I'm hoping to be able to do everything on Broadway that we were planning to do this year, which was two eighteen to Donald Burton, Donald, Donald, this year, and then we're hoping to do that next year as well as add more to it. But I'm still going through the numbers, so I'm hoping to be able to do essentially twice as much on Broadway next year with this savings as well as the additional that we'll have next year in our normal budget.
So that's good, because, you know, of course, folks were asking. I know a couple of us forwarded forwarded over some questions. Um, part of our strategic twenty thirty vision plan uh, is the crossroads double down, and so all of these roads lead to uh, that area, but we're not forgetting about Broadway. So that's very good news and very good bid. And so I want to compliment you for thinking outside of the box, coming up with a strategy to move forward. So thank you, sir. Absolutely.
Yes.
Um, council, time to uh, uh, vote on the approving the award to Peterson Contractors. So please cast your ballot.
Yes.
All right, so that was approved unanimously, seven oh. All right, could someone take one, two, and three, please?
Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a renewal agreement with Delta Dental for fees associated with administration in an amount of thirty six thousand five hundred seventy four dollars and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number two is adopting a resolution approving a renewal agreement with Walmart Blue Cross Blue Shield for fees associated with administration, network access and stop loss, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number three is a resolution approving a renewal agreement with National Insurance Services for fees associated with life, long-term disability policies, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone in the um, um, audience that would like to speak towards uh, those three items uh, pertaining to health? Going a second time, council? All right, this is a electronic vote. Uh, if there's one that you don't support, please let us know, and we will make sure that we know that.
Yes.
All right, that was approved seven oh for items one, two, and three. Could someone take uh, four, five, and six, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following resolutions. Number four, a resolution approving a farm lease agreement expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty three, with Michael Cook to farm approximately three point six five acres of land as at the southwest corner of Noel Street and Northeast Drive for eighty dollars per acre for a yearly a yearly rental payment of two hundred and ninety two dollars and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number five, a resolution approving Cloverdale Park Lease Agreement with Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. And number six, a resolution approving an agreement with the USDA Wildlife Services to minimize wildlife-related property damage and risk to human health and safety and authorizing the city forester to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Um, does anyone have questions on items four, five, and six? Going a second time, council?
Just a quick question, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Anderson, the eighty dollars an acre per lease, uh, how did we come up with that when when I looked up land rents for Blackhawk County and it was the average was two hundred and fifty six bucks an acre? Is it just because of the the type of land?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Um, yeah, so it's not a very high CSR, and then it's a very small parcel. Um, so in the past, we've been unable to get other people to bid on it. Uh, Mr. Cook has private land that that he farms in the area, so he just swings over and picks up ours. So it's a it's an alternative to us mowing it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council, uh, please cast your vote for four, five, and six, and uh, if there's a no, let me know which one. All right, that passed with the seven oh vote. Uh, seven, eight, and nine, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the request by Three Stooges for an encroachment agreement to allow for the placement of a private storm sewer connection on the public right-of-way of Martin Road and the M two P Plant Industrial District located in front of thirteen seventy Martin Road and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Eight is a resolution approving a contract with HR Green to conduct a phase one environmental site assessment on four parcels owned by Blackhawk Machinery Sales Incorporated generally located at or adjacent to fifty four Lane Street in an amount not to exceed three thousand nine hundred dollars and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And number nine is a resolution approving an extension of a lease agreement with Aspro, Inc. for mining in the Riverview Recreation Area for another ten years at a rate of five percent of Aspro's average net selling price with a minimum of five thousand dollars per year located west of thirty five oh five Easton Avenue, Waterloo Waste Treatment Plant, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
All right, that motion's been made with the second on questions seven, eight, and nine. Uh, are there any questions? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Do you have a number that we are receiving for number nine, since that's a minimum?
No.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Um, so we've been receiving the five thousand per year because they had not been mining it. Um, they were primarily mining the Brinker Lake area. Um, so now that they're uh, finished with the city portion there, they still have some private land over there. Um, on the average, when they were mining our land in the Brinker Lake area, it was about fifty four thousand six hundred per year that we were making in in uh, rental.
Um, just one last question. Are there any any environmental impacts that we need to be aware of?
No, there are not.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Counsel, other questions? All right, so that's uh, please uh, cast your votes on on those items.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, so that passed unanimously, seven oh. Ten, eleven, and twelve, please. Yes, someone?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Uh, I move to adopt the following resolutions. Number ten, a resolution approving a development agreement with Prairie Rapids Two ILC.
Number 10, a resolution approving a development agreement with Prairie Rapids II LLC. Is it lowercase L? LLC, ILC? To construct 48 new housing units located near the southeast corner of Kimball Avenue and Ridgeway Avenue, including the infill policy incentive of five thousand dollars per unit upon completion, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number 11, a resolution approving a development agreement with John and Dan Properties LLC for the overall development of infrastructure of the San Martin Business Park First Edition, a 14-lot business park subdivision, including tax rebates of a minimum of forty thousand dollars per year, up to a maximum grant of two million, twenty thousand, forty dollars, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number 12, a resolution approving a development agreement and minimum assessment agreement with David G. Chilcote with, for the construction of a new restaurant with a tax rebate schedule of 80% for years one through five, and 40% for year six, and a development grant of 183,276 dollars and 70 cents with a minimum assessment agreement of 300,000 dollars for property located at 317 Park Road, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone that would like to speak to 10, 11, and 12 on the agenda? Yes, ma'am.
Karen Johnson, Zachary Court, Waterloo. It wasn't clear to hear whether this one is the 5,000 dollars per unit granted also on the infill.
Mr. Anderson, please get up and state it for the record.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, yes. Items number 10 and 11 would be an infill project.
Okay. All right, so there again with that, my understanding is that these are one-bedroom units. And I can't remember the exact number of them, at 5,000 dollars infill per unit. That is a lot of money for one building. I just think it's wrong that we're spending our money that way.
All right, thank you. Right, any other comments from anyone?
Mayor, Council, Daryl High, High Properties. We're the developer of the Prairie Rapids Square Development. And I'm just happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, she put it out there.
So this is, this is a resubmital of the Workforce Housing Tax Credit Application. It was submitted last year and was not awarded. You know, we build, in March, we turned 35 years old, so we, we built all kinds of projects in 35 years. The reason we're building some one-bedroom now is because we don't have any one-bedrooms. And so there's some market demand for that, for that new person out in the marketplace and the workforce. And that's, that's what we're trying to hit with this, with this one-bedroom unit.
All right, all right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Counsel? You, you, you've already addressed. Okay, counsel? Wait, I think we have someone else.
Okay, I'll wait.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's try this again. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question in regards to all this development that's going on because in the neighborhood that I live in, which is off Blackhawk Road, Huntington, Robin Road area. Several years ago, we were told we could no longer pump our sump pump water into the city sewer because it, it couldn't handle all of this water. So we consequently have to put our sump pump water into our yards, which then has to sump back up into the sump pump again to be put back out into our land, which can be detrimental to foundations of homes. So all this, all this development you guys are doing, and I know of other situations where contractors come in, put up a lot of houses, a lot of buildings, a lot of parking lots, that have a lot of water runoff. I guess my concern is, what is going to happen with the amount of water that's going to be coming from all this new development going into the city sewer when you couldn't handle our sump pump water? So what's going to be done to address that? And then some of these major apartment complexes have huge parking lots. And I know in my neighborhood where I'm at, the Elabar Hill area is higher than we are. And if they start doing more development and more roads and more parking lots, where is that water going to go? Are the contractors going to be made to be responsible to dig reservoirs, to handle the water runoff? Or are you just going to flood out our neighborhoods?
All right, thank you. Could you state your name, please?
Joyce Hickman.
Thank you so much. Mr. Knutson, could you talk about stormwater slash sump pumps to, to our guest?
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. So basically speaking, we have a stormwater ordinance that requires any new development to, excuse me, withhold a certain amount of water. I won't bore you with all the details, but they basically have to hold all of the water on there for a certain amount of time and let it out slowly to the city's stormwater sewer system, so that we don't overload our system. So there's a lot of engineering that we have to review as part of this to make sure that it's meeting our ordinances. So no, the intent is not to have anybody being flooded out. Some of our older areas where we do have, prior to, that were built prior to us having this stormwater ordinance in place, do have issues with flooding. We do look at that and try to alleviate the problems as best we can. Some of that is putting in new, new storm sewer systems when we reconstruct streets. Some of it is installing additional storm sewer to help areas. And some of it is installing new detention basins to help areas that do flood. So we try to, try to take care of these problems as best we can in the older areas. But in the new areas, we make people provide detention of themselves.
Jamie, is it okay if our guest has any questions to be able to contact you directly?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So, yeah, so basically, within each and every development, there has to be some level of water detention that goes along with that development now. And some of our older areas, prior to all of this, there's been some challenges. And as you mentioned, we had to make and do our best to have some level of remediation. But with the new developments and with the storm sewer ordinance, we require that to go along with the development, so.
Detention ponds are not necessary in these areas where they're going to be doing all this developing. I don't understand how.
Each?
Building new, I mean, bringing in new sewer systems and connecting to the old is going, when you guys couldn't handle our sump pump water. Now we're going to have apartment complexes with hundreds of toilets being flushed into it.
So, so we've gone over the time, and Mr. Knutson has your card. I'll let him respond to this last one, just because you were so gracious a little bit earlier when you.
Thank you.
The question, so, sir.
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. I'm, we haven't seen any plans for this particular development yet, but I'm going to assume there is going to be a very large basin that they are going to install on their parking lot, or on their development. It could be an open basin like you see in some, it could be underground like McDonald's has put in in the past. But they are there. So just because you may not see them, they are there.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I know I'm out of turn.
We'd see if someone else has questions for the public. Kelly has it, and she can get that, get that for you. Ma'am, Mr. Childs would like your information to contact you, if that's okay, Councilman Childs? Okay, thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else, any of our guests? Any questions, comments about these three items? Counsel?
Just, Mr. Mayor. Well, thank you. On, I just wanted to point out to Ms. Johnson that number 10 is what we, what I was speaking about earlier under, under the CLRA. And number 12, I couldn't be happier that we're working with Mr. Chilcote in that area to, to get hit, get that building back up. I'm, I'm happy with this development agreement, and I'm happy with what we're doing with him. And I'm sorry that he had to go through what FEMA is requiring him to do and all the added extra cost. Number 11, I, that is probably the most confusing development agreement I have ever read, and I read every one of them. So maybe, and what, what's confusing about it is, I needed to ask Noel on the 2,020, 2,020,040, is that the, is that the estimated cost for the infrastructure and the roads?
Mr. Anderson?
He's nodding yes.
Well, I mean, we need him to say it for the public record this time.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, yes, that's the estimate they provided for the infrastructure out there, and they're ready to go.
Okay, and I, and I appreciate that, but so, and that was the other issue because like, it's a minimum of 40,000 dollars a year, a maximum up to the, the 2,020,000. And 50% tax, tax rebates, and then if a building gets built on there, if we give them 50% tax rebates, the other 50% goes to the developer. So we won't be getting any taxes until this 2 million dollars is, is paid back, correct?
That is correct, from, from these specific properties. And we're aware of two projects that'll be happening pretty quickly out here, but you're, you're exactly correct.
Okay. That's my question, thank you.
Counsel? All right, please cast your vote. If you are voting nay to one of these, please let us know. Mr. Nichols? Yes, all right, so that passed 7-0. Could someone take 13, 14, and 15, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution supporting the application by Prairie Rapids Second LLC for the Iowa Workforce Housing Tax Credit Program to construct 48 new housing units located near the southeast corner of Kimball Avenue and Ridgway Avenue. 14 is a resolution approving supplemental agreement number one to a professional services agreement with AECom Technical Services, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, originally executed March 7th, 2022, in an amount not to exceed 39,500 dollars in conjunction with the fiscal year 2023 Sunnyside Creek Improvements Wet Detention Pond and Channel Stabilization Project Contract 1062, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And 15 is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with AECom Technical Services, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in an amount not to exceed 329,500 dollars in conjunction with the fiscal year 2023 Biannual Bridge Review Program, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone that may have a question on 13, 14, and 15? Going a second time, counsel? Questions, 13, 14, and 15? All right, that is, please cast your vote. All right, that passed 7-0 unanimously, so, all right. All right. All right, Councilman Foyce, just for clarity as we move through the agenda, has asked if we can take 16 and 18 together and then, you said, to take a quick recess and then come back with 17, and then ordinance number one, which is unfair practices in conversion therapy. So we'll come back to that. So right now, could someone take 16 and 18?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. First is a resolution approving the City of Waterloo Smart City Strategic Action Plan. And number 18, resolution supporting Grow Solar Cedar Valley.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone with questions about the Strategic Action Plan and Grow Solar? Going a second time, counsel?
Just a quick question on 18, sir.
Yes, sir.
And this is the, Jonathan, this is the group that, that came and spoke?
Yes, Mr. Boson.
My question is, putting our name on it, using our city buildings, do we, do we have any liability if a, if a, if a patron or someone that decides to buy into this program has an issue, and then they end up going into a lawsuit against this, this whole process? Can we be named in this lawsuit? Because we're attaching our name to it, we're allowing them to use our buildings, we're allowing a lot of Waterloo to promote this.
No, and the reason why it's no is because individuals will still enter into a contract with the engineering firm, which we as a city are not choosing. That's going through a public RFP process through this group. So we don't assume liability in that situation. It would be the person who's installing the solar cells, which we are not doing in any way, shape, or form.
And Marty's in agreement with that? That we have no liability by throwing our name on there and?
Barton Peterson, Legal Department. The answer to that question would probably rest in whether the action against the defendants is in contract or in negligence. And of course, anytime there's a negligence lawsuit, most plaintiffs' lawyers name every defendant they can. So it's virtually impossible to answer that question with certainty. Clearly, the city is, in a way, promoting an idea of supporting solar power. To what extent there's a lawsuit for breach of a contract or some type of negligence, of course, it's always possible the city can be named as a defendant. So I think that's the best way I can answer that question.
And, and on this, this group out of Des Moines, and you've worked with them, Jonathan, what, what? How do they finance themselves? What do they get out of the contracts that are signed? I mean, how do they?
Yeah, they're, they're funded through, through philanthropy. They're not, they're not getting a cut, if that's the question. They're working on, on helping cities and counties, of which they've done dozens, just go through the RFP process through an educational, similar to what the C-triple-E talked about. They're, they're sort of a guiding organization, but their funding comes from outside of, of this activity.
And that, and that was my only concern. I, I'm happy that, that we're trying to bring solar in for residential and commercial. I'm, I'm just concerned with our liability.
And then one question I have, and I did not ask you before, but it's not a gotcha. But it's just in regards to, is there an expectation that our communications department has to do marketing for them?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, maybe make a comment or ask a question, but it was my understanding that it is something that we want. It's important that we minimize, right, the harm that we're doing to the earth creation. And also that the more people that opt into this particular project, it reduces the cost of homeowners.
Yes, so it's, so it's a group buy. So it's kind of like going in on a side of beef from a meat locker. The more, you know, the more people who share it, the, the lower the cost. And so this will help do that. In addition, you will notice in the resolution that a council member or a representative from the city would be there. I know that lots of folks had concerns. I have concerns about making this accessible because these can be expensive projects. So I think one of the things that that person on the RFP process will want to talk with this group about is how can we work with local lenders to have more accessible loan financing programs? So that this is not exclusionary as much as possible, if that makes sense.
But also, it's a tedious, tedious process to try to navigate any type of federal-state tax credits as well. So this could be a good sounding board to helping people navigate that process as well. Mr. Mayor. Sir?
Mr. Greider, does this preclude anybody from utilizing a different solar company that if they were not, if they didn't, if the RFP had a different?
No, absolutely not. This, this group is really focused on education. They'll put out our, our RFP, they'll, they'll take bids and all of that. But if, if someone says, hey, I don't really like that, I want to go with this other company that I've been contacted about, they are absolutely 100% free to do so. Or not do it at all if they show up and don't, don't like what they hear.
Thank you.
All right. All right, 16 and 18, please cast your, your vote.
Yes, on 16, and no for my reasons on 18.
So on 18, there is a no by Mr. Boson, but in 16, there is a yea.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Yep, that carried, as I mentioned. 16 was 7-0, and then as indicated, 6-1 for. Yep, that carried, as I mentioned, sixteen was seven oh, and then as indicated, six one four eighteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to recess for no more than five minutes.
Second.
All right, five minute recess. It is forty after. Hurry up and let's get back. All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Opposed, five minutes. One.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to return from recess.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have returned from recess.
You need a gavel. You got one.
Do it.
You never want to pull out the gavel in a meeting, but I I see that, but the spirit is good conversation, so I appreciate everyone. But we did make a motion the second to return from recess. And so the first item, first item on here is number seventeen.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution supporting LGBTQ plus Waterloo residents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. And and first off, I just want to set the tone. For the last several months, this has been a very tough conversation on both sides. You know, we've had conversations with others that have felt like their public safety was at risk. We've had conversations with other that feel very strongly about wherever their convictions lie. The thing that I want to get across prior to us starting is that we are Waterloo. And just because we may not agree with the particular issue does not mean that we are not a part of this Waterloo family. So yes, please state your heart, state your passion. But let's just make sure that we all remember that we are Waterloo. We all live here. We all work here. Let's just remember our comments in that spirit. Not here to control how you feel, but this is a subject that people feel very passionately about. And we just want to make sure that our comments are done in that spirit as well. So number seventeen has been made with the motion as second. And that is a resolution supporting the LGBTQ plus Waterloo residents. So is there anyone that would like to speak to the resolution? And then right after the resolution, we will go into the conversation about the ordinance. So this is just the resolution supporting LGBTQ plus residents. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the resolution? Going a second time. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
It has been very clear, unfortunately, over the last several months, that some members of our community are not accepted for the simple problem of being who they are. We have seen attacks on them from lots of folks in power, and that's not who we are. The foundation of this country is on the idea that out of many come one. And that means many. And so it's very important. It's very important that in that in this day and in this age, when we are witnessing some people who wield tremendous power, using it to denigrate, to ridicule, to demonize folks simply because of their orientation and and identity, that those of us who recognize the right thing, the moral thing, the courageous thing, use their voice to protect those who have been marginalized by others in power. So I hope everyone will vote in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to thank Jonathan for being so diligent on this. I know that we've been going at this for the last couple of months, and it has brought a lot of emotions out of us and out of our city. But again, I just want to say that we absolutely stand with all the members of the LGBTQ plus. And I believe that the people that I sit here with are on the same wave, so I appreciate you all for doing this right tonight.
All right, and as was mentioned, this is in support of the resolution. So without further ado, there's no other comments by counsel. Could you please make your vote for the resolution?
Absolutely.
All right, so the resolution passed unanimously with a seven oh vote. Could someone take ordinance number one?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time. An ordinance amending the City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances by adding Article C, Unfair Practices Conversion Therapy, to Chapter Three, Human Rights, Title Five, Police Regulations.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. And so, of course, we've had a work session a couple couple weeks ago. We've had conversations about the previous ordinance some time ago. But Mr. Greider, before we before we move to public comment, could you specifically state what this does?
Yeah, absolutely. And I know that there's been some some misinformation, so I want to be clear on a couple of things. Conversion therapy, also known as sexual orientation change efforts, also known as reparative therapy, is a practice that has been denounced by every mainline medical association in America and internationally. Because the practice is predicated on the belief that being gay is somehow wrong. And it's not. It's an ineffective practice. There have been numerous studies that have proven that it is ineffective. It does not change people's orientation because orientation's not a mutable trait. It also leads to increased anxiety. It leads to increased depression. It leads to increased suicidal ideation and unfortunately, suicidal ideation success. In fact, in the latest survey that we have, forty five percent of LGBTQ teens in their lifetime have contemplated suicide. And the number of teens who have contemplated suicide, who are exposed to conversion therapy, is seventy eight percent. And of that, unfortunately, we know that at least thirty percent are successful. That we know of. Now, there's been a lot of hay made about this article about transgender Americans and all that. This bill doesn't do that. This bill doesn't talk about transgender Americans. What it says is that, in Waterloo, if you are a member of the LGBTQ plus community, you cannot be subjected to what amounts to a harmful practice trying to convince you to be someone that you are not. That is it. That is the end. What this does is this issues a letter from the city if we believe that practice is happening. And then we follow that up with sending a complaint to the ethical boards, all of which oppose this practice, so that they can do a licensure investigation, as is per their purview. So what this ordinance does is it says that a denounced, dangerous practice is not acceptable, that if you do it, we will notice, and we will notify the licensure body that you are in charge of. It has nothing to do with transgender care. It has nothing to do with insurance. It has nothing to do with changing people from who they are to who they are. It's about protecting kids from people telling them that they are fundamentally broken because of who they love or how they identify.
So that's that's what's being proposed in the resolution form. And so the so the council from the previous form has made some some changes. But the general thought is that this practice is unfair and needs to be identified and called out. So the city council or mayor's office cannot go to here and close this down. But the governing bodies will be informed of what is the belief that this is an unfair practice. So right now, the floor is open. Please state your name and address for the record. Let us know what your thoughts are. And that is what counsel is bringing forward to vote for tonight. Yes, sir.
Pastor John Harold, seven thirty one Magnolia Parkway. Conversion therapy that you're speaking of means if a child comes to me confused, and I'm counseling them, and I say anything at all, that are you sure this is what you're doing? You're going to silence me. That's what I hear. When I read the ordinance, it was very vague. If somebody even thinks I'm asking a child, are you sure, they can report me? And where does the snowball stop? You know, you say, okay, we're going to go to the licensing board. We're going to see if your license is pulled or whatever. What you're doing is limiting my right to be able to have an intelligent conversation with anybody. Somebody comes to me and tells me they're gay, hey, what happened in your bedroom, that's up to you. Okay? I think it's wrong, but I'm not going to tell you. You're wrong, and you're going to burn in hell. That's not what I do. We are here to love each other, to impact the community. But to limit me to the rights that I can't even speak to a child if they ask me a question? That's not right. I agree. There are practices where kids are being immersed in cold water. There are practices where kids are being immersed in cold water, they're being given electric shock, they're being browbeat, they're being beaten up. Those things shouldn't happen. But we need to have an intelligent conversation and be allowed to have an intelligent conversation if they ask the questions. And, and that's my right to be able to answer those questions the way I feel. So do what you want to do. I feel like I'm standing up here as Don Quixote, tilting at windmills. Because when I see the faces, I know you all already made up your minds.
We, we, we don't have to do that, pastor. Because, one, folks are listening to you respectfully. And the fact that you even came up and you pointed out some of the archaic practices that have not worked, I mean, I think you really got folks to listen to. You admit that, yeah, that's, that's not the way that's done. You want to have a conversation. So you, you don't know where folks' minds are at, so just give us, like, folks have given you full intention, give us the same, give us the same right. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Honorable mayor and members of the city council, it's a pleasure to be with you this evening. My name is Dr. Michael Peters. I live in, at seven twenty-two South Hackett in Waterloo. And I'm a retired physician. I've, I've practiced in the, this area for over thirty years. I've been retired for a couple of years now, but I've been asked, and I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of the medical community in this area. As you know, Mercy One and Allen are two of the biggest employers in Waterloo. And I've actually researched many of the laws and the ordinances in other states and cities. I've also obtained legal advice from attorneys. So I want to start with kind of general information on a national state level. So there's twenty-one states that actually have bans against conversion therapy. There's twenty-four states that have no state law, or they do not allow local bans. But interestingly enough, all of the twenty-one states that actually have a conversion therapy ban in place, it targets licensed mental health providers only, not religious, not spiritual advisors or counselors. Iowa, where we live, has no state law or policy. And actually, the Supreme Court has not ruled on the bans, but is actually considering hearing a current case challenging a state ban in the state of Washington. So with, I'm going to bring a couple of conclusions to all of this. First of all, I respect your opinion. I, I believe every one of us is seeking what is best for individuals of City of Waterloo, as I am. As a physician, that's been my job for years. But unfortunately, I believe sometimes just one side of the story is presented. And so we, as a scientist in medicine, I always look on both sides. You have to weigh both sides, okay? And so this is my understanding, okay, that, that as a, that you do not have the legal authority to monitor physicians for the way they practice medicine. This is the duty of the state medical board. And because there's no state law in Iowa, potentially, it's exposing the City of Waterloo to lawsuits. It's already very difficult to recruit physicians and doctors to Waterloo. There's a shortage of doctors in many specialties. When physicians are being told how to practice or being restricted in their practices, this, what happens, they often leave and they move to more favorable environment. When any one of us goes to their doctor for medical treatment, you would expect them to inform you of risks and benefits involving your medical care. This is called informed consent. It's a standard of medical care. And I know it's not entirely different, but I've heard, I'll be honest, I've heard stories of certain people have made choices, and they, they come back later and they say, no one told me this. So, so it's well-known that there are people that have chosen to detransition, that have filed lawsuits because of serious medical complications from surgeries and hormone therapies. So it is important for an individual to make informed consent. They should know about these risks. And with closing, it's been a privilege and a blessing to be with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Karen Johnson, Zachary Court in Waterloo. Ditto to what the doctor just said here in terms of therapies going both ways, being open to all discussion. But I believe last time, Mr. Greider, you were going to bring us some statistics on cases that we've had examples of in the Waterloo schools. And I was wondering what that report had found. You've talked about, you started your presentation today with many, many cases. Can you give us some examples specifically of, without breaking any privacy, but tell us what's going on? Because I personally have heard of none. And I think, just to finish up before I leave the podium, is basically, it's a conversation that needs to occur. Young people, particularly when we're talking about minors under the age of eighteen, they need to have an open conversation about all the aspects of the decisions they might be making, so that they are fully informed as young people. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Greider will give you a few moments, and then also the response to having a conversation versus practices.
Yeah. So based on the count, and it's, it's not through the schools, I want to be very clear about that. It's through Iowa Safe Schools, which is an LGBTQ-affirming organization. They have informed me that they've had six complaints within the last year in this area. If folks haven't heard about that, I, I don't really know what to tell you, but, but they have. And I've heard of more. I'm not going to spill the personal details. Those folks shared that in confidence, but did share that I could share with them, that we're looking at about a half dozen cases. Again, this ordinance does not deal with transgender care. It deals with a practice that isn't having a conversation. It's not saying, hey, how do you feel? How's that make you feel? Are you sad about that? This is a practice that's documented where, where folks are being mentally and verbally abused, in some cases physically abused. And I think, I think that we can all be on board with the fact that no one should be in any setting with any trusted person told that something is physically or mentally wrong with them because of their orientation. This ordinance simply protects folks from attacking minors because of their orientation. Of course, this doesn't preclude conversations. And in no way, shape, or form, does this preclude anyone having an open and honest dialogue. What this precludes is folks using their power as licensed professionals, because this only applies to licensed medical professionals, to tell folks that there is something fundamentally wrong with them because of their orientation or identity. And I think that is incredibly important. I know that there has been a lot of misinformation spread about this ordinance, but that is what this does, is it protects LGBTQ kids from being told that they are broken because they are gay.
And I think, I think that's, that's, so that, that's what folks wanted to hear on the record. He had some real questions about how this has an impact on him and his ability to have a conversation. But like I said before, also, the, the gentleman, the pastor also mentioned that he is, he does have heard of very archaic situations of change, so having a conversation. But I just wanted you to state on the record so people can hear what this is and what it is not. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Sam Coffrin, two six four Derbyshire Road, Ward Five. Today, I rise in support of this ordinance. Through my studies at the University of Northern Iowa, I have met many LGBTQIA students who have been involved in this practice, that have ever seen this practice. And the horror stories are unimaginable. As a gay person myself, I just like to ask, like, I don't, I work three jobs. I took care of my siblings and my mother when my father passed in 2016. And I just, like, I just don't know if it's, I don't know, there's nothing wrong with me. There's nothing wrong with who I am. There's nothing wrong, just because I'm gay, doesn't mean that, there's words thrown around groomer, indoctrination, and I can, it's, I don't understand where it's coming from. It puts my life in danger. This practice endangers lives, leads to suicide, as Councilman Greider has mentioned. It, it's unbelievable that we have to debate this in this day and age, that, that practice is like, these should still be allowed to happen. I very, very much implore the city council to vote for this ordinance. I, I, I just, I just don't, I don't think, there's, my identity is just who I am. I can't change it. I, I don't, it's not, I didn't decide to be like this. It's, it's just, it happened naturally. I wasn't, there's people saying that, oh, they were part of my language, but molested and ended up this way, or sexually assaulted and ended up this way. It is not true. It's not true for a majority, if any, of us. I just, there's nothing wrong with me. I shouldn't be, like, people like me, or minors like me, shouldn't be subjected to this practice just because other people disagree with who they are, or think it, think my sexual orientation is an ideology, or think it's political. It's ludicrous. It's absolutely ludicrous. And I, I know, I just hope you all will vote the right way. And thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Sam. I've known Sam for a few years, and he's been an incredible leader, and we've worked together. So thank you for your comments, sir. Yes, sir.
Mike Wagler from Waterloo, Wendy Road. I want to speak in support of this ordinance. I have, I was on the faculty at the University of Northern Iowa for thirty-two years, and ten of those years, I was a department head. And one of our programs was the preparation of mental health counselors. Now, right in the middle of my tenure, in nineteen ninety-eight or so, the American Psychiatric Association, which is the leading body speaking to mental health preparation and practice and ethics, took the position opposing any psychiatric treatment, including reparative or conversion therapy. This is just to amplify Councilman Greider's comments about several different associations. So this is the leading professional and practice association. And so it's my job to be very familiar with the issues and practices and ethics of the preparation of mental health counselors. And so I wanted to share a couple items from the, from the official position paper of the American Psychiatric Association. As I said, they oppose this, this type of treatment. Their literature that they referred to and relied upon indicates reports who claimed to, that the attempts to change them were very harmful, as Councilman Greider had mentioned also. And that some who even had claimed to be changed, later recanted, and also said that really gender diverse patients have been shown to benefit from gender affirming therapies. They took, they have four statements that outline their position that they briefly share. One, ethical practitioners refrain from attempts to change individual sexual orientation. Two, ethical practitioners respect the identities for those with diverse gender expressions. Three, psychotherapies should be used which affirm individual sexual orientations and gender identities. And finally, it encourages legislations such as this ordinance, which would prohibit the practice of reparative or conversion therapies that are based on these faulty assumptions. So for twenty-five years, the leading association overseeing psychiatric and mental health preparation has opposed this, and I think we should be, stand in line with those who know best. Thank you.
All right. I knew you looked familiar on the plan.
Jill Miller, North Francis Street, Cedar Falls. Although I live in Cedar Falls, I have lived in Cedar Valley since 2000. I have lived and worked in both Cedar Falls and Waterloo. And I want you to support this ban. Our children are our greatest resource, and we need to protect them. So on the emotional, I'm going to speak to some of you on the heart. From that emotional, do not allow individuals to demean our children for who they are or our LGBTQ families. They need to know that they will be protected. And from a financial point of view, we heard a lot about money tonight. I, I have two adult children. They are looking, one of them currently lives in Cedar Falls, is working in IT, looking to work remote, and is planning on leaving Iowa because of what is happening to villainize LGBTQ plus families. I have another child who has a very good paying job. And instead of buying a multimillion dollar home in Waterloo or in Cedar Falls, they will not come back to the state. My children need to know that on the most basic level, in our cities, in our counties, we are going to start protecting them so that we're not losing that great resource and having a brain drain of all of our young people. Please support this.
Thank you, counsel. My name is Dr. Brent Burr. I'm an internal medicine physician. I work as assistant medical director at People's Community Health Clinic in Waterloo. I am also one of the founding members of the Prairie Parkway LGBT Clinic with the wonderful Kyle and Jen Christensen right over here. I wanted to emphasize that the previous physician does not speak for the medical community in the Cedar Valley. I can't say that enough. First off, first off, I want to reiterate by this list here, that the resolution we previously approved here outlines, the nation's leading medical and mental health organizations, including but not limited to the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, American College of Physicians, the American Medical Association, the American Psychiatric Association, the American Psychological Association, the American Psychoanalytical Association, the National Association of Social Workers, the American Association for Marriage and Family Therapy, the American Counseling Association, the American School Counselor Association, all state that conversion therapy is a bad practice and should be disavowed. This is universal. This is about human rights. We should not sacrifice this. I appreciate this council for taking this up and for doing this, and I wholeheartedly hope that you vote for it. There are kids dying because they do not feel they have someone they can trust to talk to that will affirm them. And that means listening. It doesn't mean telling them what to do or intimidating them, which is exactly what we're talking about here tonight to try to stop. So I appreciate you so much, and please vote for this.
Hello, my name is Mitchell, citizen of Waterloo here. And I do want to make a few things clear that Jonathan has helped, but I will also reiterate. First of all, no one here is to attack religion or religious freedoms. Is your best practice to preach and pray to religion or God of your choosing? And I want to make that perfectly clear. Second of all, this is, ordinance does not talk about anything with reassignment surgeries or even medications, because people have been misinformed that this is what that is about. And no, this is technically about, what this actually is, is kids being tortured. It's a practice widely rejected because attackers can be considered torture by many. And if you do hear studies of medical professionals, please, I do ask that you do research, because sometimes they do get cited by people who are fictitious companies that will pretend to be other ones. And I think that's what sometimes when you get medical professionals who come up here and do say stats from certain organizations, when you look at their numbers, some of them only in the hundreds, while many of the reputable ones that he had just mentioned before me are in the tens of thousands of medical professionals. To show you how absurd it would be to not ban conversion therapy, let's talk about something that most Iowans definitely know about, Iowa and Iowa State football. That sounds silly, but bear with me here. If I were to tell you as an Iowa fan that you are wrong for feeling like an Iowa fan, do you think it'd be appropriate if I showed you video footage of an Iowa football game, and every time they made a first down or a touchdown, I would zap you with electricity or tell you that you can't be cheering for that because that's a wrong thing to do? It's absurd, and rightfully so. This isn't political, this isn't anything against religion, this is, this is just to stop practice of torture of people for being who they are. And just to, finally, just my last personal story here. I have been personally in a story of someone who, I was a resident assistant at Iowa State between in a story of someone who, I was a resident assistant at Iowa State between 2013 and 2015. I had the unfortunate situation of telling one of my friends who is in the LGBTQ community that their friend was, had committed suicide in one of the residential buildings when they called me and asked me if their friend was around because they were concerned for their safety. And I had the unfortunate ability to tell them that.
Melissa Hind, Waterloo community. I don't want to give my address. While I don't like speaking in public, this issue and our kids are important, more important than any bias. Mr. Bozen, you agreed in an email that both sides were valid. Are you backing down now from your position?
Let's keep, let's, first of all, if you're going to go after a councilman and you didn't even state your name and address for the record, if you wanted to-
I said my name.
Your, an address for the record. You can get that to the clerk after. But please address your comments to me. As I mentioned at the beginning, folks are, folks are, you know, on different sides of this. I don't believe that there's malintent by their perspective, at least up here. We can't speak for everyone else. So, please just address your comments to me, ma'am.
Okay. One of the first things that I learned as a Christian was love your neighbor. There's no asterisk after that. It does, if you, it says if you agree with your views, who they love, what their culture is, there's no asterisk. It's just love your neighbor. I'm hearing a lot of bias in this and a lot of misinformation. Someone at the last meeting said something about a percentage of people that transition and then regret it. In 227 test studies on sexual transition by experts in the medical field, counting thousands of people, only 1% had any concerns about the transition. And half of that was about the size and shape of the surgery. It wasn't about the transition itself. Major medical associations support gender affirming care for minors, professionals that actually work with these kids and have dedicated their lives to them. Tests prove that gender affirming care saves lives. Most transition surgery is put off until after age 18. Most hormonal therapy is reversible. I love the kids that I know enough to let them to be LGBTQ if that makes them happy, if that makes them whole. Kids can get nose jobs. They can get tattoos, join the military with parental approval. But the argue, the issue that you want to argue about is their happiness in their lives. How many of, of the women here are on hormones because of changes in their, their age or their, their makeup? How many of the men are taking hormones or Viagra because it makes them feel better? It, it's a change. But that's what these kids are doing. They're taking medication to make themselves feel better, to make themselves feel whole. Right now, the military spends over $82 million on ED prescriptions. That's roughly five times what they spend on all transgender care. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
My name is Marcella, my name is Marcella Gru. I reside at 203 Miriam Drive, Waterloo, Iowa. Again, I'm here to oppose the ban on conversion therapy. The city had a paper for us to read so we would support the ban on conversion therapy called the American Psychological Association Resolution on Sexual Orientation Change Efforts, with their conclusion, and I quote, where say diversity in sexual orientation represents normal human variation, end of the quotation. In other words, what they are saying, sexual orientation diversity is normal and healthy. And then they go on and, and make the statements of how many prestigious organizations support them. However, how can this statement be true when it contradicts and violates the word of God? Remember, the author of the Holy Bible is a one true Jehovah God who is far superior in intellect and wisdom than any one of us here on earth. Also, Jesus said, "I am the way, the truth, and the life." In the Bible, all biblical statements are true. Romans 1:18 to 32, God calls homosexuality and lesbian sin. In Deuteronomy 22:5, transgender is called sin. In Revelation 22:16, all liars go to hell. Yes, all of us have sinned, and so all of us need a Savior. So, whether you call yourself a heterosexual or homosexual, you and I need a Savior. When you ban conversion therapy, you are telling the LGBTQ, you don't have the right to know that God loves you, that they don't have the right to know that He died on the cross to forgive their sin. You're not telling the LGBTQ, all they have to do is confess and forsake their sin and accept Christ as their Savior. By doing this, they're entitled to go to heaven as much as any other believer. So, vote no against the ban on conversion therapy.
Hey, if you, if you yell out, if you yell out, I'm telling you now, if you yell out, if you yell out from the audience, you will be removed. The council has an ordinance on in support. People have their opinions. So, yes, sir.
I'm Mike Knapp, 1141 Independence Avenue, Waterloo. Back again. I was here last council meeting in support of the ban. I'm here again to speak for the new ordinance proposal. I talked about my, my granddaughter and nephew both being gay and the problems they went through as they struggled through their adolescence with their sexual orientation and identity. And luckily, they had families that were supportive of them and they worked through those challenges. I just wanted to, though I'm here from my church tonight, I just wanted to reaffirm that the writers of our constitution and our, they wrote the constitution in a way to prevent the establishment of any one religion or a state religion while protecting freedom of religion. And that led to the separation of church and state. We support that. And we commend the council for your efforts to pass laws and ordinances that protect and serve the entire population of the city and not any one particular religion or religious interpretation. And we hope that you continue with this ordinance and pass it. And because the youth in our community need to know that if they are forced into conversion therapy, that there is an option available for their own protection. And I think Mr. Greider has talked about the different types of conversion therapy that this has brought a lot of us out about. It's not about having open discussions between a parent and their child or with their minister or with their friends or neighbors. It's about giving them some protection when they're being forced to undergo a therapy that tells them that they are innately bad or evil. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. David Hind, Kirkwood Avenue, Waterloo. We've heard many arguments, many statements tonight and in previous nights on this whole topic, from the moral viewpoint to the humanistic viewpoint, whatever it is. Let's look at, take a moment just to look at the financial aspect of this as well. The practice of conversion therapy on LGBTQ youth and its associated harms costs the United States an estimated $9.23 billion annually. Okay? Recent study estimates that nearly 509,000, excuse me, LGBTQ youth in the U.S. were at risk of being subjected to conversion therapy last year. This is from 2022. And researchers, in a first of its kind analysis, estimated that the annual direct cost of sexual orientation and gender identity change efforts, otherwise known as conversion therapy, totals just over $650 million. That includes the cost of things like health insurance reimbursements or fees to religious organizations which perform conversion therapy. However, compounded with the indirect cost of LGBTQ plus conversion therapy practices like treatment for anxiety, depression, substance abuse, suicide attempts, that total skyrockets to an estimated $9.23 billion per year, according to a study published in the Journal of American Medical Association Pediatrics in 2022. To quote Casey Pick, Senior Fellow for Advocacy in Government Affairs at the Trevor Project, "We know conversion therapy has long been a burden on LGBTQ young people and their families, as the practice has consistently been associated with poor mental health and greater risk for suicide. But the economic costs this practice has on society are just starting to be understood. We must ensure that taxpayers' dollars are never again spent on this dangerous and discredited practice and that we are instead investing in LGBTQ inclusive health and education programs to uplift the well-being of LGBTQ youth." Think about that. $9.23 billion a year. Sure, that's in the whole country, but this is still a good chunk in this city alone. All right? Can we really afford to support conversion therapy? We need to pass this ordinance for the benefit of all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jason Falk, Kimball Avenue. And first of all, I just want to say that the language of the ban definitely includes attempts to change someone's gender identity. So, I think it does include the trans people. But I'm not here to argue for a therapist's right to tell a trans youth things like, "You're going to hell. You don't have the right to exist. You're a horrible person. You're illegitimate. In my personal favor, you're nefarious." These are all, there are already channels for reporting that kind of abuse. I'm here to argue for a compassionate therapist's right to disagree with his teenage client's self-diagnosis and to, based on his evaluation of that client, make his own diagnosis informed by his training and years of clinical experience for the sake of the long-term well-being of that client. To argue for that, I must take issue with the idea that kids know infallibly who they are, an idea several of you have affirmed. And I agree, it's true that if they know infatably who they are, then gender-affirming counseling care is the only logical therapeutic approach. And that's my beef. The statement, "Kids know who they are and they can't change," offered without proof, without nuance, without qualification, puts it in the category of a statement of faith belonging to a creed. So, let me just ask, do, do all kids know infallibly at all times who they are? Do all teenagers know who they are? Which version of them is the true self? Do they know who they will want to be in 10 to 15 years? Do all kids who struggle with mental health know who they are? Do kids who are finding themselves attracted to the same sex know who they are? Are they trans or are they homosexual? Have you not heard stories about youth who go through medical transition, allowing drugs and hormones to interfere with their normal physical and mental development, only to realize later that they are gay or lesbian, not trans? So, who is really doing the converting and subjecting kids to medical experiments that are more like torture than anything a conscientious, non-gender affirming therapist would do? I realize medical treatments are banned in Iowa right now, but affirming a kid's chosen gender and socially transitioning them almost guarantees they will seek medical treatment when they turn 18. So, I'd like to give you a quote from a press release from the National Academy of Medicine of a different country, that of France, issued in February 25, 2022. They say, "There is no test to distinguish a structural or persistent long-term gender dysphoria from transient dysphoria in adolescents. Moreover, the risk of overdiagnosis is real, as shown by the increasing number of transgender young adults wishing to detransition. It is therefore advisable to extend as much as possible the psychological support phase." I ask you to read the whole document. I have it here. I will submit it. And ask yourself if it sounds like hate or more like medical professionals with common sense who just want to make sure that they do no harm in treating their clients. 10 seconds. Please don't pass this ban and mandate gender-affirming counseling as a one-size-fits-all approach to treating kids suffering from gender dysphoria.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Jacob Taylor, 566 Sheridan Road. When this conversation got started in February, I thought that the gentleman from Ward 2 was signaling a specific practice when he made a comment, which I will quote, referring to Black Hawk County. However, we do know that in 2023, which is the year we're currently in, we're pretty sure there are folks that are thinking about providing this. Well, I found that comment particularly curious. I know that others did as well. And so, I thought to myself who he might be referring to, because he waved his hand and said, "Now, now, now." And he never publicly said exactly what he was talking about. And I think I know. And I think it is on him to say, but I'll tell you that I met with these folks who are therapists licensed by the state board and part of the faith community. And I'll share some things. First, I was amazed at their professionalism. They are professional beyond belief. They do not impose their personal viewpoints on their patient. Instead, they painstakingly make sure that their patients are comfortable and okay with engaging in particular realms of conversation. Secondly, they talked to me about the ethics. One thing that's ethical is to show a broad picture for the patient. And when we talk about someone with gender dysphoria, surgery and hormone blockers would be a small part of that picture. And it is ethical to show alternatives and options to the patient. That's what's ethical. And this ordinance on those grounds is not ethical. And finally, one thing I asked is if an ordinance like this was affecting them, what would they do? Without hesitation, they would say they would call their attorney. This ordinance from the last one hasn't changed a whole lot. It still gets between the patient and the practitioner. It still censors speech that goes on. I don't think the definitions have changed here unless I misread. This will affect speech, so it's a First Amendment issue. So, I would caution everybody here, if there's a specific vendetta against a particular practice or, or specific things on those lines, I think we're walking in dangerous territory here. And we may get beyond areas of freedom of speech and, and immunity to those lawsuits as individual counselors could be at risk. So, I would exercise very much caution before voting for this ordinance for those reasons.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Could I just make a point of order that I would prefer not to be accused of violating laws by folks who are up at the dais? We talked about decorum, but I was just accused of violating potential laws. So, I would, I would, excuse me, the time is mine.
Your time is up, sir.
That was not my insinuation.
Excuse me. It is my time.
Your time is up, sir.
You pushed past a woman to get up there.
But, but, uh-
Can we please, Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, ma'am, for, for that. It should never touch you or move, let you out the way.
Mr. Mayor, I-
Yeah, let me, let me-
The decorum is very important on this issue. And there have been a lot of folks who have said some pretty horrendous things, including at me. And I think it needs to be important, you know, during this meeting, we've had folks yell out and they weren't told that they had to leave. But, but now we're going to do it to some folks. I think that we need to make sure that we're following decorum.
Don't, 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 okay, listen. Don't say that I'm playing favorites, because that's what you're insinuating. I'm telling you, right, don't say that and make it seem like somebody's for against somebody having a conversation. You yelled out from the back of the room and I called it out. Got up to the podium. You've had an opportunity to address everyone. But don't, don't try to play me on this issue. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Carol Tier. I live on Audubon Drive. I'm an ordained minister. And my husband and I are lifelong residents of Waterloo. We raised our- We raised our son and our daughter here, and as I told you when I spoke, I stand here again before you as one who is very grateful that my son and daughter returned to Waterloo after moving away and brought our seven grandchildren back here. I also, last time, told you that I respect very much the work you're trying to do. And as a former school board member, I know what it's like to be on the hot seat. And it's your call. So here I stand tonight. I stand again tonight to ask you to put a ban on this inhumane practice of conversion therapy. Let's be very clear. Conversion therapy is not therapeutic. It does not heal or help. It doesn't help any individuals who have a right to be who they were created to be. Just this past week, I spoke with a person who is a survivor of this practice, and he attested to the trauma that it inflicted on him, damage that took years to overcome: self-hatred, self-mutilation, depression, and, as attested too many times tonight, suicide. They're all well-attested, documented when misguided individuals attempt to prey the gay away. Your job as a city council is to protect all citizens. To that end, I am grateful, as I said, for your serious consideration of this proposal. Do not let fear, hatred, or judgment win this day. To pass this ban would give hope at a time that it has never been more needed. And I would like to say, just adding, sitting here tonight and listening to some of the other pastors and people of faith speak, some speakers this evening have stated their opinion to support and allow conversion therapy based on their interpretation of Scripture. While I affirm their right and the right of each individual to interpret their sacred texts for themselves, no one has a right to harm another because of that interpretation. So I ask you to please vote to ban conversion therapy in our community and keep our youth safe and free from harm. I thank you for your time, your energy, and your service.
Hi, my name's Mackenzie Beck. I actually live in Cedar Falls, but I have been receiving medical care here in Waterloo for over the last 10 years, all relating to, you know, different psychiatry, therapy. I just, today I encourage the city council to pass the ordinance banning conversion therapy. I hope you can view the passing as an implementation to improving the public's health and safety. LGBTQ youth are already at risk for suicide attempts and ideation. A study by the American Journal of Public Health found that individuals between the age of 13 and 24 that have experienced conversion therapy are more than twice as likely to have multiple suicide attempts. Those who undergone sexual orientation and gender identity change efforts are more likely to experience serious psychological distress, depression, engage in substance abuse, and attempt suicide. Passing this ordinance is going to protect the youth that cannot speak up for themselves, not only in this community, but reaching farther out than you know.
All right, thank you.
Michael Bayer, 129 Prospect Circle, Waterloo. I urge the council to oppose this ordinance and vote it down, and I will list the reasons in a moment. I also urge you to vote no on suspending the rules as appears on the agenda. As you can see, this is a controversial issue, and I think it would be disrespectful to the citizens of Waterloo to pass it for the second, third time tonight. Okay, this ordinance harms young people. I know that you have good intentions to protect the young people, but we know that young people make decisions that sometimes they don't think through the long-term consequences. This ordinance would prevent licensed counselors from exploring those long-term consequences and perhaps being subjected to accusations of discouraging that young person. Number two, this ordinance encodes viewpoint discrimination. The definitions specifically point out that speech or therapy based on the content is allowed or not allowed. That is a violation of the First Amendment, and we put the Water, City of Waterloo at financial risk of a lawsuit and legal cost. As I understand it, you've already been cautioned and warned by the city attorney that this is a possibility, and I don't think that is good, sound financial stewardship for you to do that. Secondly, this, or fourth, this ordinance is at the wrong level. The licensing boards are at the state level, not the city level. So it's already, in my understanding, against the law, most of these practices, and if they're occurring, if this child abuse is occurring, then it should be reported by any citizen that's aware of it. If it's occurring in the city of Waterloo, and there are some people who are mandatory reporters, and among those are schoolteachers as mandatory reporters, so if it's happening, it should have already been reported. I strongly urge you to vote no on this ordinance and on the second, third suspension.
Just really quick for clarity, Mr. Greider, 45 seconds. If it is reported that these archaic practices are being done to a young person, what happens at that point?
Depends on who they do the reporting to. Lots of folks don't report this, because we see, as with other abuses, that they.
Or if we find out, then what happens?
If we find out, what we're going to do is we're going to send a letter, and then we're going to send it on to the licensing boards that oversee licensed professionals, which is who this ordinance applies to.
So we're doing exactly what the gentleman indicated? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council members. I appreciate the opportunity to visit with you tonight. I'm Sandy Salmon, and I'm from Janesville, so not here from Wat, not from Waterloo, but I'm a state senator from District Number 29, which includes Bramer, Butler, Chickasaw, and Floyd Counties. So I have a lot of constituents that come to Waterloo for their mental health services. So I'm here to visit about it for that reason. I believe that this ordinance would serve to limit their choices, and for no good reason. Families ought to be able to choose the counseling that best fits the goal they have for their minor child. Issues of sexuality, sexual ethics, and identity involve a family's religious beliefs, and they should not be hindered in receiving counseling that's aligned with their faith. Many families do not agree with the beliefs and viewpoints that have become popular in society today regarding sexuality, and so they should not be denied access to mental health services that align with their faith. And the same is true with, of mental health providers. They should not be denied the ability to counsel in alignment with their faith and in accordance with their professional code of ethics, which prioritizes client-directed This type of counseling censorship ordinance singles out specific speech, that an individual can experience change in their sexual orientation, or that an individual can live consistent with their biological sex, while permitting opposing viewpoints to be discussed in counseling. It is wrong based on the principles of freedom of religion, freedom of speech, parents' rights, professional code of ethics for practitioners, and equal protection of the law. This type of ordinance that puts content in viewpoint-based restrictions on speech has already been struck down in the 11th Circuit Court as unconstitutional. I know that, as a member of the state legislature, we've passed many ordinances that the resolution identified as anti-LGBTQ. I don't believe that to be the case. I totally reject that notion and that characterization of the legislation we have passed. It's been passed for the safety and protection of youth.
And you know, I think, I think, I think one of the, one of the challenges, and you know, your comments are your comments, of course, but I think one of the challenges that people are having is it doesn't seem like they have an opportunity to properly communicate with folks on the state level. So I don't know what vehicles are there to sit down and have some dialogue, to talk about some of the challenges and the changes. You know, for instance, it's been an education process for a lot of people to actually understand what is happening in some situations to our young people. And so if there seems to be, and I don't know if it is, if there seems to be an absence of dialogue on the highest levels with those that are actually experiencing some levels of trauma, maybe there could have been some middle ground to say, you know, I don't want to be too visual, we're going to force you to watch a certain type of XXX. Like, like, folks need to be able to communicate and talk about their challenges, and then seeing if there's something that can be done on the state level. So to folks that are on the ground and maybe folks here, it seems like there's a disconnect. So whatever, whatever proceeds here tonight, opening up dialogue with folks, because you probably have some constituents, and maybe you have spoken with folks, but you may have some constituents that really have some real concerns and some things being done that you probably wouldn't approve of. So that's, that's all I'm just saying, dialogue moving forward, it helps, and you've probably already done it, but thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Aliya Arman, 223 Southbrook Drive. Buenas noches, salam aleikum, power to the people. I'm speaking tonight as a queer person who has also spent my life working in racial justice movements and digital security, so it has been my business to recognize what targeted acts are and are not protected as free speech for the safety of my clients. I'd like to offer some research and some specifics on why this ban is not a free speech problem, but a sound public health measure that we should pass. So you will hear folks from the side who oppose the ban cite a Boca Raton case as defense that conversion therapy bans violate the First Amendment. That case is an outlier, and Iowa is not Florida yet. In most, yeah, in most cases, considering this question, courts have found exactly the opposite. For your notes, the Ninth Circuit, pickup v. Brown, considering the California ban, not a violation. The Third Circuit, King v. Christie, not a violation. The Ninth Circuit, again, Tingley v. Ferguson, also nope, because governments don't, quote, "lose the power to regulate the safety of medical treatments performed under the authority of a state license merely because those treatments are implemented through speech rather than scalpel." And finally, the Supreme Court twice has said, "They don't need to hear this, the Third and the Ninth got it." Why these rulings? Because in U.S. courts, freedom of speech does not mean you can say whatever you want, wherever you want. We seek better than the Bart Simpson model of freedom, in which I spin around with my arms out, and if you get hit, it's your problem. We balance freedom of speech against collective freedom and safety, which is why we do regulate some forms of speech: defamation, fraud, incitement, fighting words, true threats, and speech integral to criminal conduct. In the cases I mentioned, the courts found that speech that is happening in therapy is actually just incidental to licensed professional conduct, so it's not looked at by courts the same way as speech at a rally or a pulpit. So consider, I was raised Muslim and understood the Quran to say it is wrong to be, want to be wealthier than your neighbor. I also work under computer security certifications regulated by the state. Should the First Amendment allow me to give paid state-certified advice that I call security but really based on redistributing my client's wealth because I think that's safer for the community? No, because chaos is a weird way to govern. In closing, James Baldwin said, "We can disagree and still love each other unless your disagreement is rooted in my oppression and denial of my humanity and right to exist." Like many of you, I am eager to move on to more productive disagreements about how to build Waterloo into the beloved community for all, instead of arguing with people who hold the belief that my way of life and love should be cured, because this is not straight, white, cisgender, and Christian, which is what I call hateful, and which is the stated belief of Cedar Valley concerned citizens, from which two of the last four folks who spoke against the ban come to us today, though they told you they only care about medicine. Don't be fooled about what this is really about. This is about white supremacy and homophobia, and we should not be fooled. Let's get to work and do this together. Please pass the ban.
Hi, my name's Charlie Grove. I live at 1426 Shamrock Drive, and I'm one of these scary trans people that everyone's been talking about tonight, and I have to tell you, nothing they said is true. Nothing about like the medical way that like trans people are treated is true. There's no like doctor in the world who is going to listen to a child, say, "I'm this gender," and then just either start prescribing puberty blockers or hormones, or give them surgery, which doesn't happen. I know that this ban doesn't cover trans stuff, but I'm still a member of the LGBT community, and this ban is to protect us. And I'm just so tired of seeing my way of life get slowly taken away from me. I transitioned when I was 19. I'm 28 now. I have not regretted it for a second. It has only improved my life. I stopped being suicidal when I got top surgery, and the only way I was able to pay for top surgery was because my mom died and I got an inheritance from her, or else I would have never been able to get it because Medicaid doesn't cover top surgery. And I'm disabled, and I'm on Medicaid for my entire life because what I have doesn't have a cure. So like, I just want you to remember that trans people are human. All of you in this room need to understand that I'm a person. I have a face, and I have a voice, and I have a life, and my life matters. And I'm so tired of people using fake statistics and made-up anecdotes, and the one situation where someone has detransitioned, and oftentimes, they don't actually detransition, they just like transition to another gender, like non-binary. So it'd be nice if you treated LGBTQ people like people, but I get that we're devolving into fascism and that it's easier to side with the Christo-Fascist who will tell you that God is everything and God is the law, but we live in America, and that's not the case. God is not the law. God is not in charge of my life. God is stupid, and he doesn't matter. And if you think he does, then you're stupid, and I think, yeah, sorry, that was rude, but I'm, I'm just, you know, it's, it's clearly I'm very upset because my rights are being taken away, unlike these Christians claiming that their Christianity is somehow being affronted. Like, there's a really good possibility that I'm going to be forcefully detransitioned because Medicaid won't cover hormones, so.
So, 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 Sam, what's your name? So, so I'm Christian, and I don't dislike you, and I don't think you're scary, so, but, you know, I just want to tell you, thank you so much for your testimony and what you've gone through.
Good, good evening. Can you hear me? Okay, awesome. My name is Chris Hale. I live on 326 East Fourth. I'm a proud downtown resident. I moved here to, downtown Waterloo resident. I moved to Waterloo two years ago. I chose to live in Waterloo. I know what this place can be, and I know what this place is, and I'm proud to be here. The fact that this ban is on the agenda proves that, that you guys care, and I just want to thank you first for that. So thank you so much. Someone quoted this research article, and I'm just going to reiterate these numbers because they're very powerful. A 2022 peer-reviewed comprehensive study by the Trevor Project and health economists at Citell estimated that 509,000 queer identifying youth were at risk of being subjected to conversion therapy in the United States in a year, totaling $650 million in medical costs. However, the study found that the harms associated with the practice, such as substance abuse, depression, anxiety, and suicide attempts, are significantly higher, an estimated $8.58 billion annually, bringing the total estimated cost of conversion therapy to $9.23 billion annually in the United States. Again, this is in 2022. You're good. Additionally, a study published in the American Journal of Public Health found that LGBTQ youth who underwent conversion therapy were more than twice as likely to report having attempted suicide, and more than 2.5 times as likely to report more. attempted suicide, and more than 2.5 times as likely to report multiple suicide attempts in the past year. Cornell University identified 47 peer-reviewed studies about whether conversion therapy can alter sexual orientation without causing harm. Of those 47, 12 concluded that conversion therapy is ineffective and harmful. Only one study concluded that sexual orientation change efforts could succeed, and that was in a minority of its participants, and the study itself has several limitations in its methods. The remaining 34 studies could not make an empirical determination about whether the therapy could alter sexual orientation. To put it simply, conversion therapy is incredibly costly, ineffective, and most importantly, harmful to the well-being of our youth. This isn't even about the morality of queerness, or if it's something to be medically cured of. I'm confident we can find common ground that we prefer our children to be healthy and alive today, instead of harmed and forced to live with decades of trauma that comes from subjugation to conversion therapy. To our city council members, I urge you to do the right thing for the agency and safety of our youth today and every day following. Conversion therapy is dangerous, and Waterloo's youth will be harmed if you do not support this ban. I thank you for your thoughtful care and consideration tonight. Thank you.
My name is Kalyani. I have lived in the Cedar Valley since 2017, and I will not be stating my address for the record. I'm here today because I want to see our LGBTQ youth be afforded the opportunity to grow up in a community that prioritizes their safety and well-being. Let me be clear, what I am talking about is this ordinance, which is about conversion therapy led by licensed professionals, nothing more and nothing less. The Trevor Project's national survey on LGBTQ youth mental health has consistently found that youth who are subjected to or threatened with conversion therapy report higher rates of attempting suicide than their peers. Kids deserve the opportunity to explore their identities in an environment that supports them, that affirms them, and tells them that that exploration is okay, not one that tries to teach them that who they are is categorically morally objectionable. Evidence shows, as you've heard from countless others tonight, that so-called conversion therapy is not only ineffective, but poses significant detriment to the mental health of those who are subjected to it. Let me again be very clear, there is nothing therapeutic about conversion therapy. Every major medical association opposes the practice, including the American Medical Association, the American Psychiatric Association, and the Pan American Health Organization, a regional office of the World Health Organization. Our community deserves better, and our youth deserve better. If this council is truly committed to serving the best interests of its people, then you have a responsibility to pass this ordinance and join countless state and city governments across the nation in banning conversion therapy. To my queer and trans kin, I see you, I love you. And to this council, our children's lives are at stake. It is an election year, and your voters are watching.
Hey, folks, I'm Sam Blatt. I live on Lafayette Street, and I just want to say that obviously you've seen me here a lot, we've been here for months, and I just want to start off with reiterating again that not everyone is the same religion, or even are religious in that case. Live, lived experiences are valid, and these conversations that we've had have not just been happening for these past few months, since February, they've been happening for years beyond our knowledge, you know? And I don't, again, I'll reiterate, why are we still speaking about this in 2023 when we know what's right? I'm really gay, if you can tell, I've always been gay, and I'm not unnatural, I'm not wrong for that. Me and my queer friends are hardworking members of the community, we're leaders, we're advocates, we're parents, we're more. Also, I'm a Human Rights Commissioner, and I want to say I fully support this, as many of my other commissioners do as well. And I've supported this from the beginning. We need to move forward, not keep moving back. We've waited for this vote, we've been waiting, and we saw what happened. Horrid actions by the state, hundreds of people gathering in support for LGBTQ rights, and a big misinformation campaign from an opposing side. We're tired of the hate, and we know after that this gets, after this gets voted on, it's going to continue. That's not going to stop, but we need to keep pushing forward, and this sets a good precedent to start and continue. So I'm asking you to do the right thing, the right thing plainly and simply. Thank you.
My name is Finch Madlock Blanchard. I live on Ray Street. If you go to the Public Works Building, you'll probably see my house. I'm here to speak because I heard a lot of people talking about what decisions children can make, and a lot of those people haven't been children for a long time. I'm a little bit closer, so I would just like to speak on what it means to be an LGBTQ youth. The first time I knew my gender was not my assigned gender at birth was in kindergarten. I told my best friend at the time that my new name was my birth name with an M in front of it. I hope that proves that one thing kids can't choose are names. It was not good. When I got into middle school, I got my first gender-affirming haircut. I had never felt more like myself because of how my hair was. When I got to high school, I was lucky enough to have a group of friends, all of us transgender, about six of us. Out of the six of us, one does not consider themselves to be transgender now. We are all adults, and we're happy, and we're thriving. Beyond that, I spent a lot of time in the church community growing up, and I was also very gay during that time. I remember going to youth group with my girlfriend and being ostracized in a big circle around us, and everyone going, are you really gay? But you know God hates that, right? And I was like, I just wanted something to do on Wednesday. So, that being said, conversion therapy is torture. It is. I have post-traumatic stress disorder as well as another stress disorder, and I also have trauma from sexual things. Showing children pornography is sexual abuse. Zapping children is sexual abuse. Hurting children is abuse. That's, that's it. When you look at a child, if they tell you that the sky is pink, that doesn't mean you get to hit them. You just go, oh, okay. Maybe they'll change their mind, or some people think the earth is flat. We're not telling them what to do, we're letting them live and let live, right? It's the pursuit of happiness. That is all that we're asking. Thank you.
Edson's G Avenue in Wellsburg. Churches in Nazi Germany unfortunately were largely supportive of the Nazi Party, or at least ignored a lot of the atrocities that were going on. These were not, however, the backward conservative Bible-thumping churches, they were the progressive liberal and liberal churches of their day. They had long ago rejected God's law and the authority of scripture and thought the church had little or nothing to say with regards to governance. There was a more conservative branch known as the Confessing Church that resisted Hitler. Many of these Christians found themselves in concentration camps or conscripted and sent to the front lines for a swift and certain death. Contrast this with the American War for Independence. It was called the Parsons Rebellion in England because it was spurred on by a group of illegal Protestant pastors called the Black Robe Regiment, who declared that the king had violated God's law and was no longer a legitimate ruler, but a tyrant to be resisted by the lesser magistrate of the colonial governments. The country's founders repeatedly cited scripture in political argumentation as well as justification for law. Their theology was part of a long tradition summed up well by the title of Samuel Rutherford's work, Lex Rex, The Law is King. In the last meeting, it was stated that some of the people gathered here believe in a very different God than the councilman did. He spoke well. I do not know where you go to church, but I can almost guarantee you that you trace your theological roots of your church to the same higher criticism to kingdom theology and patriotism that primed the German Lutheran Church for the Nazi takeover. You, like the Germans.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Are you correlating, correlating a council member to Nazi Germany? If you are, please, please either remove your, you can't, just like, you're correlating his God to Nazi Germany. That's, that's way out there, and folks, I'm not telling you how to express yourself, you're very articulate, but, you know, relating somebody and trying to make the correlation to Nazi Germany, that's a horrible example, and one that we're not going to listen to. So I would ask you to tweak what you say, and please stop with that.
Can I have a few more moments back?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I was, I was commenting on theological roots and the authority by which we make law, because all law is inherently moral. We are legislating morality no matter what we do. You're saying that this is wrong, or that is right, you're saying that the conversion therapy is wrong, and other people are saying that is right. I'm making the case that I can defend my position biblically, historically, and logically, other than popular opinion or merely declaring.
Eight more seconds.
Can I keep going?
Yeah, 20 more seconds.
Or declaring that in a godlike fashion that it is right. How do you defend your ordinance? What if the agencies and associations that you cite change their tune like they have in countries like Sweden or France? What if the majority of the population supported Sharia law? Do we enact ordinance to support that? How do you know that you're not just a useful pawn laying one more brick in a foundation of tyranny?
All right, thank you. Good.
Todd Obedal, 124 Amity Drive.
Mr. Obedal, just one second, please, sir. Let me, I'll do it right here. Sorry about that. Hold on one second, sir. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Todd Obedal, 124 Amity Drive. I would like to say that I do identify as white, cis, Christian, and sometimes stupid. That's definitely the case, but I would just like to say that is, Mr. Mayor, you've done, you've been put in a difficult position tonight, and I believe you've done quite well moderating this conversation. But I would like to say that I think it, this conversation has degenerated into people that we disagree with are either evil or stupid. The accusations of white supremacy as being behind this could not be further from the truth for me, and I have the criminal charges to show for it. I graduated from Cedar Falls High School in 1986. I didn't know any gay people in high school. A few years later, as an adult, I found out there were, but I went to school in Texas and was part of the theater department, and there I got immersed in the community. And let me tell you something about being in North Texas in the 1980s and being friends with homosexuals. I took a lot of grief for it, and I said that these people are my friends, I like this person, I like this person, I may not care for this person, but I like this person, and it doesn't matter to me. This is where I come from. Whatever, let me tell you, the environment here in Waterloo, Iowa is a, is a haven, is a safe haven compared to what, what I experienced down there at that time. That is where I come from. I am stating, again, as I did at the last meeting, that I am not making a case for or against conversion therapy, but rather the appropriateness of this body making a determination on this. Again, we had a reference to a legal opinion from Des Moines that said home rule applies. Home rule does not apply. The Home Rule Amendment, which was passed, says municipal corporations are granted home rule power and authority, not inconsistent with the laws of the General Assembly to determine local affairs and government. The laws regarding medicine and the regulation of medicine are governed by the Iowa Board of Medicine, which is empowered by the legislature. We cannot make our own medical rules here. We cannot make our own rules on insurance, we cannot make our own rules on alcohol sales, we cannot be a dry city or a dry county if we want it to be because our powers are delegated to us from the state. I made, in my previous comments this evening, I asked for the opinion of the city attorney on this. The city attorney's opinion, if the city attorney says that this, this ordinance is fine, and it is not in conflict with state law, then the city attorney is taking that position, and he is protecting this council. If this council passes this without seeking the opinion of the city attorney, there is a danger of you being liable for any sort of costs that go involved with a lost case. I am asking my neighbors, my city council representatives, to ask our city attorney, paid for by the taxpayers, for his legal opinion on this before proceeding. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Al Manning, South Hill Drive. I want to get to the bottom line first off, so I don't run out of time again. There, okay, the things that are torture are already prohibited by professional ethical guidelines, and there is already a state agency that exists and a process already in place that allows anyone having a complaint against a licensed mental health counselor, which is who this ordinance applies to, to file a complaint directly with the state. So for the benefit of the audience who doesn't have a copy of this handout, this is from the homepage of the Iowa Board of Behavioral Sciences. I'll just read the opening introduction. "The Iowa Board of Behavioral Science evaluates the qualifications of applicants for licensure and grants licenses to those who qualify. The board establishes rules and regulations to ensure the integrity and competence of licensed mental health counselors and marital and family therapists, and investigates complaints for unprofessional conduct. The board is the link between the consumer and the licensed mental health counselor, and as such promotes a public health, welfare, and safety." Now, you'll notice it didn't say anything in there, a city council should intervene. It says, "The board is the link between the consumer and the mental health counselor." So I guess my question is, well, let me say, since we've been told that all the major medical and mental health associations have denounced conversion therapy in their code of ethics, the patient already has an avenue to make a complaint to the state if they felt this was taking place. There is no need for the city to be involved in this at all. It would be an unnecessary duplication of services and an unnecessary use of city resources. I see no reason for this ordinance to go through, yet you seem to be insisting on pushing it. And it really didn't take me that much time to find this information, and we're talking about, oh, state boards and this and that. There's one agency that handles this, and I apologize that I didn't find it earlier. I assumed that, based on what we were told, such a thing didn't exist because there's a need for a city ordinance. Well, there isn't a need for a city ordinance. All you've done is create a divisive atmosphere and unnecessary controversy, and you've agitated a large number of your citizens. For what? For what purpose? For the purpose of virtue signaling? I don't know. The state has this handled, and that's where this should remain. Thank you.
So just really quickly, if folks don't have an avenue to go and talk to someone, they can contact what department?
So, per ordinance, and we know that, that...
I'm leading the witness.
Yeah, I know.
Folks can contact the...
Folks can contact, they can contact the Department of Health and Human Services.
But if they don't, if they don't have that reason...
But if they're not comfortable, because oftentimes abuse victims aren't comfortable confronting their abuser, they can contact our city attorney under this ordinance, or the Human Rights Commission, and we will help them through the process.
And then once they contact the Human Rights Commission, we find out, then what happens?
A complaint will be issued to the licensing body.
So we're not...
We're not interposing, we are simply providing guidance for folks who are being abused, who sometimes need extra help because they're being abused.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Janet Chuster, 210 Borland Avenue in Waterloo. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Grinder.
Yes, ma'am.
I agree with the previous speaker about the ethics, and I'm wondering if the way this ordinance is worded, does that mean that the city attorney is somehow representing or helping the individual write their complaint? Are they providing additional services? And are they acting on behalf of the individual? Are they merely giving the phone number, or the email address, or the website where they can plug in their complaint?
And I want you to have your three minutes, so we'll take that, we'll come back to it later, but I want you to have your time right now.
And I want you to know that I come to you as a mom. I have loved ones in my family who identify as trans, the youngest of which is under seven years old. And so I'm familiar with some of the struggles, and, and some of the pain, and some of what I've been told about. I don't experience it myself, but I can hear it in the room. I can feel it in the room. And I'm also aware of depression and anxiety just in the general population, so much so that I went back into school, and I'm getting my master's in counseling. I'll have it this Saturday, I pick up my diploma. I already passed the licensure test, so you can expect me to be a licensed professional here in this community, probably mid to late next month. And I would very... And I would very much like to think that this city is welcoming to professionals and that they don't overly burden them with layers of legislation ordinances that don't really do anything, but that the professionals have to understand so they can protect themselves against, if that makes sense? So does that mean that every single time I see an individual who identifies as trans or bi or any of the protected areas, would I have to document I did not use conversion therapy just to protect myself legally from a false claim? I have no intention of utilizing a process, something called conversion therapy. It's not an evidence-based practice. Everybody knows it's been denounced. But what I'm saying is, how do I protect myself against that? Would my liability insurance even help me with that? My professional liability insurance. I actually reached out to the insurance agency to ask them that question.
So one of the first things that I do want to do is, regardless of where you stand at, thank you for acknowledging that people are going through things, and that's-
Yes.
-what a lot of, what a lot is being missed. But, you know, so just really quickly, once again, Councilman Greider, person says that I've been through this. They do what? With the city, so people can be clear on that.
Right. So again, this is not having, this is not banning tough conversations. This isn't banning trying to help people. What this is banning is a practice that the speaker said that they weren't going to use, which would be attempting to convert someone's gender orientation or sexual identity from something that it's not to another through aggressive, harmful means. So if you're not doing that, then this ordinance doesn't apply.
And then if there's aggressive, harmful means, and it's reported to the Human Rights Commission, and what happens?
There is a whole investigatory process by the licensing board that's not handled on this issue. It's from the licensing board, made up of professionals, so it's not us making the call. It is licensed professionals from the licensing board, just as if any doctor or psychiatrist received a complaint from a non-LGBTQ member-
Malpractice.
Malpractice or whatever, so.
All right, so, thank you.
The question initially was, is the city representing the individual in some respect, helping them write their complaint?
We are taking the complaint, and if they need help writing the complaint, they will be helped to write it. It will be sent to the state examining, because obviously from the previous, there's an understanding about what role can play, what role can be played sending a letter to the state, letting them know that this person is going through there as being an advocate. So thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
So that would be he said, she said.
We went, so, I mean, but see, I tried to, I tried to do it, and I, a little bit of over talking. You just, congratulations on the graduation in a really good space. We really mean it. You got an applause for it, and then you hit me with the one-two. All right. Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Heather Florrie, and first thank you to all of you for this really challenging work that you're doing. I really appreciate you working through this with everyone. I currently live in Cedar Falls, but I grew up in Waterloo. I graduated from West High, and I have worked in Waterloo and lived in Waterloo most of my life. We've heard from several people of faith this evening, and I just want to share that I am a Unitarian Universalist, like the other folks here tonight wearing this shirt. The Unitarian Universalist faith tradition stands on the side of love, believes in the worth and dignity of all people, and vehemently opposes inhumane treatment such as conversion therapy. If my minister were here tonight, she would fully support this ordinance. We've heard from doctors and counselors tonight. My father was a prominent doctor in Waterloo for many years, and my mother was a family and marriage counselor. If they were here tonight, they would both support this ordinance. As an issue of justice and as part of my personal belief system, I support this ordinance, and I urge that all of you do as well. Thank you.
All right, and we will take three more, three more comments, then we'll move, we'll move to voting on this item. Yes, ma'am.
Cheryl Christensen, 1702 East Mitchell. I have kind of a simple solution to this problem. Number one, the city should not be involved in private, personal decisions of parents. Number two, it takes 18 years old to enlist in the military and 21 years old to drink alcohol. Now we're having drag queens at five years old to 12, and to me, that's child abuse, and it should be a criminal offense for that. And when these kids get to be 18 to 21 years old and see that they have mutilated their body-
That's a broad generalization.
That's going to be a problem for them.
And that's what we call a stereotype. That's a broad generalization, so.
Well, if you have a mental health problem now, it's going to be worse.
I can explain it. But Ms. Christensen, you can have the podium. I'm just saying it was a broad generalization. I didn't mean to disrespect you, but that's just to put that on everyone, so please continue your comments.
No, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And I got your, you called me today, I believe, as well, and I got your, got your comments also.
My name is Joyce Hickman. I live on Robin Road. I was born and raised in Waterloo. I was a second graduating class from Central High School, which they built right smack in the middle of a field I used to ride my horses in, so I wasn't very happy when they built that high school, but I graduated from there. Anyway, I just want to say, I have gay members in my family. I have a gay niece who was with a woman and had a child from that, that my sister wanted to reject the grandchild because of the situation the grandchild was born into. My mother told her she absolutely better not because that child, no matter how it came, was her grandchild. And years have passed, and that grandson is now in the U.S. Navy and makes our family so proud. It doesn't matter how he came into this world. He is a human being, and we're so proud of him. So I do not have a problem, other than just wanting people to stop and think a minute. I hear a lot about the LGBTQ people having, you know, being upset about how they're being treated and whatnot. Guys have to understand that there's a song out that says, "You can take me out of church, but you can't take the church out of me." So many of these people sitting here and people that have a problem with this are basing it off things that they were taught their entire life in church. Yes, Christians, we are to love, and, but the Bible does have certain statutes that we are told throughout our life to teach to the next generation and the next generation. So you have people sitting out here that are older and are not willing to accept this lifestyle because of things that they were taught. My mother told me, she was raised in a Catholic church, and it used to be if women wore red lipstick to church, you were considered a whore. Used to be in the Baptist church-
Let's just say fast.
Well, so anyway, in the Baptist church, women couldn't wear pants, and so I'm just saying, there have been different things throughout society that little by little we get worked into and realize that people aren't bad people because they wear red lipsticks. Women aren't bad women because they wear pants instead of a dress to church. I mean, these things happen, but it takes time. I don't think anyone here has hatred for these citizens who feel that they maybe were born differently than they, than they look. I think it's deeper than that, and I just want to say, I, I mean, I am a Christian, and I love my fellow man. I, I don't want to, I don't want to see anybody harmed because of who they are. But the fact of the matter is, I just want to ask also on this legislature that he's talking about passing-
Direct it, direct it.
So is that going to stop parents from being able to talk to their children if they're upset that their child is feeling gay?
No, no.
So, you know, there is a warning in the Bible to those of you who call yourselves Christians and have read the Bible, that the Bible does tell us toward the end days, the government is going to have more and more control of our children. That's what you're fighting, fear. Fear in parents' hearts that someone else is making a decision for their children.
And our last speaker, ma'am, please come up. Thank you so much for your patience.
Hello, my name is Laura. I will not be stating my address publicly due to safety concerns. People in our community who have publicly defended the rights of the LGBTQ+ community have been threatened. Not only has our state legislature emboldened homophobia, but local officials' actions have as well. The Cedar Falls mayor recently, recently came out with a public statement saying he could not do his duty as a public servant to sign a Pride Month proclamation due to his personal religious beliefs, a stance he was forced by the public to ultimately overturn. But in addition, the actions of the counselors here today, who decided to delay this vote months ago, when you had the chance to pass this ordinance, has created an unsafe environment for me and those in my community. You gave homophobic hate groups ample time to assemble and purposefully spread disinformation about the function of conversion therapy and how it is used, as many people today have pointed out. I am an out and proud queer woman and parent. With the amount of hatred we as a community have endured, not only on the state level, not only in the state of Iowa, both personally and legislatively, but nationwide as well, we do not feel safe. We do not feel safe in the state. We do not feel safe in Cedar Falls with Mayor Rob Green's anti-LGBTQ+ letter, but we, right now, with your refusal to sign this ordinance the first time, we do not feel like we are safe in the city of Waterloo. I feel the need to remind you that Waterloo is the city that Jason Gage was murdered in for being gay. Waterloo is the city where queer people experience hate crimes that don't make it into the news. You have a duty to create a place where we can thrive. The bare minimum you can do for a community is to make sure we are not tortured by practices such as conversion therapy. I see people talking here who are more concerned about their own liability rather than children being tortured, and I think we need to readjust our priorities here. I would also like to state that in 2016, the Iowa Board of Medicine actually did address the topic of conversion therapy, unlike what a few people here have tried to say, and they felt that it was best left to the job of the state to make that determination. In conclusion, I urge you to pass the conversion therapy ban today, as I know you are capable of, so we can start to move on from this hateful homophobic environment that those of you who voted against the conversion therapy ban originally have allowed to fester. I hope you have learned that hatred has no place in our community and that you vote to pass, to pass this conversion ban, this conversion therapy ban today. The lives of people in our community dependent on it do the right thing.
I know you said the last one. I'm Cheryl Aguilar, and I spoke about a month ago or whenever, two months ago. I'm on Cadillac Drive. I don't know, I don't need my whole three minutes, so don't worry.
It's right here, right here.
I, I'm kind of shocked that we're here again, and we didn't get more definition in this ordinance. Nobody has pointed out, the wordage of the ordinance really didn't, I think a couple people did, it really didn't change. I think, Mr. Greider, you quoted the ordinance almost verbatim in the paragraph, the largest paragraph, "As long as such counseling does not seek to change an individual's sexual orientation or gender identity," and you added on all of these adjectives, including explaining the torturous ways, and, and yet you didn't put that in the ordinance. And honestly, I feel like that's the whole reason we had so many people speaking. I would say, raise your hand anyone who wants torturous actions. Nobody, nobody here is going to raise your hand. We have heard that two months ago. So why didn't you put it in the ordinance? So I would encourage you to go back to the drawing board, and you understand our confusion between the two. I think everybody here loves one another, so make it clear.
So you want some, so, so when they're doing the investigation, you want to make sure there's some specificity so that even after it's done, there will be some level of investigation to look into the claim, and if that's validated, then it goes to the board for the board to look at it. So there'll be two levels. One, there'll be the person's experience, and then there'll be two levels to taking a look at the situation. So thank you so much for your comments.
I would encourage you to put that in the ordinance because it's very subjective at this moment.
It is, because it goes to the commission or the city attorney to review, and then it goes to the, the next level.
Thank you.
So I understand what you're saying, and thank you so much for your comments. All right, Counsel, we have had work sessions, yeah, the Public Comments Co., we have worked sessions, we've had conversations. Are we ready to vote?
Mr. Mayor, just real quick.
Sir.
And I promise that I will keep this within time. To my LGBTQIA+ neighbors and friends and kin, both here and at home, I want you to know this. I see you. I love you. You absolutely matter, and everything is right with you, no matter what, and you absolutely 100% deserve to live the best, fullest life as the person that you are, and I want that to be stated on the record.
All right.
We have heard a lot tonight. We have seen a lot of bigotry wrapped up in dish and generous packages. We have seen folks fight for their very right to exist. We have seen some quibble and equivocate, counting pennies when we should be counting lives. There are some who want to argue that it really can't be that bad, or, oh, gosh, we should let someone else worry about this. I reject that claim. When danger is present, leaders, real leaders rise up to meet the challenge, to protect the vulnerable, and to stand for what is right, not necessarily what is easy. And let us be clear that there is danger here in the state of Iowa. It is fueled by hatred and bigotry and political malpractice and the seeking of electoral gain. Tens of thousands of Iowans have been subjected to attacks, to persecutions, to ridicule simply because of who they are, pleading that they should stop being divisive simply because they exist. Across our state and in this room, we have some who would seek to push our LGBTQ neighbors back into the closet and bar the door and turn the clock back to a more dangerous time. Enough is enough. Very rarely does this council deal with moral issues, but when we do, it is incredibly clear that as real leaders, we must do the right thing, the thing that protects our neighbors. This legislation does that. This legislation tells every kid who lives in Waterloo that you are good the way you are, no matter what. This legislation states clearly and firmly that we will not allow hatred to live here in our community, that everyone will be treated with fairness and dignity because they are human beings, regardless of how they love or how they identify. Tonight, we face a clarion call of morality. We face a clarion call of human rights. We face a clarion call of human dignity. So I ask my colleagues to please vote for this ordinance, and let's get this done in full tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just going to say what I've been saying this entire time. As one of the gays, this was always going to get done. I apologize that it took so long for us to come to an agreement, but as a council, I feel like we did a really good job at that, and now it's time to actually get it done. I won't be long-winded about it because you all know where I stand. I've said multiple times, I like women real bad. I am one of the gays. Been a gay since I was 12, and I stand on that wholeheartedly, so I won't be voting yes today. I'll be voting absolutely.
Thank you, sir. I just want to clarify that, that my stance hasn't changed. My vote is not based on one side's ideology or the other. My vote tonight is based on the fact that I do not believe that this ordinance is legal. I believe it will be challenged in court, and I don't believe that this is in the city council's purview to enact this ordinance. That's the reason that I'm voting no tonight. It has nothing to do with not supporting the LGBTQ youth. It has nothing to do, you can shake your head, it has nothing to do with that. It has nothing to do with the other side. It has to do with what I feel is, is this legal? Is this something the city council should be involved in? And the answer is no. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, just really, I, I've supported, and I supported it when I made the motion to postpone. My support at that time with that ordinance was based on the fact that, of what Mr. Bozen just said and the legality of it, and I think, and Mr. Greider and I had several conversations, almost while there as well, to get to this point. So it was never, and I just want to say this, because I, not the hatred, I've had really good conversations, but I've been accused of being anti, and if you really knew who I was, you would have known that, and I think- And, and I think what this has taught me is you have to, on both sides, get to know the person as who they are and spend a little bit of time with, with one another before you judge as well. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I, I just want to address one of the things that I heard over and over tonight and it has to do with this being a duplication of services, where this is already available at a different level. The ability to report, this is already available at a different level. One of the things, I attended the Mental Health Awareness Breakfast last Friday, and one of the things that came up is the opportunity when seeking mental health to have multiple doors open to you and that no door is the wrong, wrong door. So, one of the reasons why I appreciate this ordinance and will be voting in favor of passing this ordinance is because it provides another opportunity for people to seek, seek refuge, seek help where they need it. When I'm thinking about mental health, you can get, seek mental health from a mental health professional, whether it be a PCP or a specialist or a social worker or a community health organization or a pharmacy. You can get into the mental health, get mental health care from a pharmacy even, before you even get to the medication. So, I'm rising in support of this because I believe it's important to create another avenue for people seeking support.
Mr. Mayor, as I shared, probably not so eloquently on the eighth, I think it was, or the first, excuse me, my days are all getting blurred together. But I, I do want to, to say that it's, we don't realize when we're throwing around the Bible what we're doing, and we don't realize some of the things we're saying because the Bible also says that you are to keep your slave in check. And I refuse to stay in check and I am not a slave. It also says some things about definitely being our, our siblings keeper. There was Dietrich Bonhoeffer, who was executed by Hitler for rejecting the fascist regime, the Nazis regime. So, we don't, you know, we're talking all of this stuff and we really don't know oftentimes the full story. And so, I'm here to say that I have an obligation to protect children from harm as a human being to another human being. I have that obligation. And then there are times that we, we hurt and harm so deeply that it's hard to repair. And it happens across a host of target identity groups. And, and we have to be very careful because some of us are still healing from racial trauma and being traumatized over and over again. So, we know what it feels like to hurt. And so, that is why we definitely need more avenues by which to provide our children protection. I definitely agree with that. And I've served on the Iowa Board of Certification for Substance Abuse Counselors and peer support, family workers. So, I also understand the certification process and the licensing process. And what we have done here will do just what we needed to do. Give them an opportunity to research it, to look into it, investigate it, and then do what needs to be done after that. So, that is why I'm voting yes.
All right.
So, as you know, before, I was one of the council members that voted to postpone, and the reason was, as stated earlier, is I was concerned about legality and passing something that will actually harm the community because of immediate repercussions. This is a human rights issue and this is the Human Rights Commission that will be dealing with this. I am very pleased to see that there was work done with this with Mr. Greider and other council members because we've needed to pass this for a while, but we could not pass it in, in that state because it would not have been effective. This will be effective. This will make sure that you are able to report these people and that you have another avenue to do so, because the importance of that cannot be understated. I'm sorry for the hurt that it's caused, for the time in between that we had to wait in order to get this done, and government isn't always the most friendly. As, you know, that's who I am, I understand. It takes time to get this stuff done, but we're getting it done today. So, thank you for your patience and I look forward to voting on this very shortly.
Right. And before we take this vote, I want to thank everyone here for your conversation, and it's difficult when the very depths of your core of who you are as a person feels like it's on the attack. But everyone here, for the most part, has been gracious and been able to state their particular cases. And I think what we miss out is not having the opportunity to have any level of conversation. So, I want to thank everyone here and it is time for us to, to vote. So, counsel, for the motion to file, consider and pass for the first time, an ordinance amending the City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances, Unfair Practices, Conversion Therapy to Chapter Three of the Human Rights Title Five Police Regulations, please cast your vote.
Absolutely.
Yes.
All right. So, we have six yess and we have one no with Mr. Bowden as he stated.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
The motion has been made second. Please cast your votes. Absolutely yes or absolutely no?
Absolutely.
As can work both ways.
Absolutely yes, yes, yes.
All right. We have six yays and one no with Mr. Bowden not suspending the rules.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I would like to make a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt this ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, please add your votes. All right. That once again passes six one and as Mr. Bowden indicated, his no to this ordinance. All right. So, before we applaud and those things, can we finish number two?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file and consider and pass for the first time, an ordinance amending Title Eight Public Utilities, Chapter Three, Serve Regulations, Article A, User Charges and Fees of Section Two, Determination of Rates and Charges to Free Service.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone that has questions about this item?
Members of the council, Forrest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. When we did the consent decree, we were told we were going to have to have raises, periodic raises, and they were spelled out of what percentage and when they were going to be. Is this one of those raises or is this an additional raise on top of those consent decree increases?
Ms. Wood.
Bridget Wood, Finance Manager, this is one of the increases for the, that consent decree.
Pre-planned ones. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Counsel questions? Please cast your vote. That passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Please state your, your vote electronically on your iPad so that the audience. All right. That passed seven zero.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Please pass your, please, please, yeah, I need to, I need to eat. And that passed unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
The motion's been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Now you can applaud.